First thing we need to do is to do the rule call. Val?
There.
Scott?
There.
Larry?
There.
Ross. This regular meeting was posted in three locations, so we've had the due and legal notice of public meetings, also it was in the Wakefield Republican. Open meeting laws, are they here, Jim?
Back to the door. Take up center there.
We all have them. I thought they were posted back there.
Okay, so... We can go without it? So, we will have a notice, the open meeting laws posted. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing for the rezoning of city-owned real estate. And we've had, we're gonna hold the public hearing. We had a little bit of a problem in the fact that what was passed at planning zoning and was sent on was not the right zoning, the zones that we were changing were not the right ones. So, our legal team has told us we can have the public hearing, but we can't vote on it tonight. We made a mistake.
Unless you want to go with what the recommendation was, which is an R2, what we're looking at is maybe reconsidering that and looking at changing it to a C, to, yeah, a C2 general commercial district rather than an R2.
Right. And...
So, the question before the board for the hearing, for the council, is going from industrial I1 to an R2, that was what was sent out to the public hearing.
And Theresa thought we should do the, we were okay to do the public hearing, but we'd be better off to table it, and in fact, the council has talked about tabling it, as we've been pretty diligent in searching for an alternative site.
Well, I think you should, if you want to continue to consider it, you should make the recommendation with the planning commission reconsider, if you think, you know, if you think that's the proper route to go.
Well, it's one of the routes we can go if we can't find a better alternative. And so, I mean, I think we're still at least considering it, right?
Do we need to have the planning zone, planning, reconsider it to this, to the...
That's what, I talked to Theresa yesterday, that's what she recommended that we do.
So, we need to recommend the zone, planning zoning, do that?
If you think it is more appropriate to do a C2, and you don't want to pass it as a C, an R2, then I would say recommend it's go back to the planning commission for another, for review.
And that's what we wanted, to be the C2, correct?
The idea, the thought was that that suit, that was more suitable than the R, the residential. And it still fits with an apartment business.
It would still allow for, it would still allow for all types of housing except trailer court housing, and it would also allow for more retail business than an R2 would allow.
So, that's where it's at? Okay, well, we'll open the public hearing and have the hearings, but that's what Theresa said also, we can have the public hearing, take comments. First of all, comments would be in favor, correct? And then those that have are opposed and neutral comments? So, I would be clear that the public hearing is open at this time. If we have people that would like to speak, the only requirement is that they sign in. And we have a, do we have a tablet or...
We have a...
Anybody got over there to sign in? So, if you'd like to speak, you can sign in, pass it around. So, the public hearing is open. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? That's probably, you can hide it, you can sign in later if you want to. We kind of know who you are. Thank you.
Thanks for having the hearing. I just sent a letter, I don't know if you received that?
I did.
So, I rehashed the entire letter, I just wanted to commend the council for considering moving forward with additional housing, I think it's a, I mean, secret that there's a need for housing in Wakefield. All these years you had done a good job of trying to advance that, and sort of as you administer each year one, just to make sure the council's aware that as an employer of about 120 employees, we have, majority of our employees are six county area that serve, but we have probably, oh, about 10% of our employees we turn over every year. And so, we're always recruiting and trying to attract new people as well as retaining the ones that we have. And it's always much easier to do that when you have all kinds of houses available. And as you know, there's a shortage of housing in Wakefield, and having that available is important for us. Over the past year, just for example, last year we tried to hire a couple of school psychologists, which we were able to hire, but they found housing someplace else, even though it was in Wakefield, there wasn't sufficient housing for them available here. And they're young professionals, college graduates who are looking for a place to get started. And I know, I'm sure you're aware that when people are, place for place to start out, having different options is important, but if you can get them here and then keep them there, then during that, as they grow in the profession and the community, they tend to look at additional housing. So, I think the department piece would be, would be important as well. So, anyway, hey, you got the contents of my letter. I know that there's a lot of challenges trying to figure out where the best places to go, and I know that if you're looking to add additional businesses in town, it's hard to do that without housing. And so, I know it's not ideal to have the housing, other words, where you're looking at with rezoning, for the proposal. And sometimes you're looking for the, for the right option, sometimes the best options aren't always the perfect ones. And so, I don't envy that decision you have to make, and I hope that you have the information either. Just wanted to make sure that you're aware that ESU One would be supportive of the housing and trust that you guys will make the best judgment on where to put that at. And hopefully, we don't have to delay too long, because along with that happens, and that just, you know, hinders our efforts to try and recruit new employees. So, appreciate your time. If you have any questions for me, I'll just point them out. Make sure you've received my letter.
Well, appreciate your letter, it was a good letter. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hammond? Thank you. Any other people that would like to speak?
You don't need to sign anything.
You know what, why don't we just, why don't you sign in afterwards?
Okay.
Yeah, we kind of know who you are.
I'm Hannah Ward, and I just wanted to add my own comments, so I'm gonna read you something quick. So, it came from neighboring states and foreign countries traveling by school groups and single families. They have pre-earths, schooners, and trains. Despite various religious, social, and cultural backgrounds, they shared one significant characteristic, and that was they were the future members of the community of Wakefield and Pasco. So, this is read from siblings in a shoebox, A History of Wakefield, this was put together for the 100th anniversary of Wakefield. And the reason why I find this important is because I'm a sixth generation on my family's farm, and the first generation is part of what made Wakefield. So, I'm invested in Wakefield for my own future because of my ancestors and what they did. So, I decided to come back to my family's farm as a sixth generation, and I knew about Wakeville in advance that I was going to be able to come back home about 2017, and flash forward a year and a half later, I finally found a place to live, and I just moved in recently. And so, yes, or this week, someone asked me, how's things going? Where are you from? And I had to say I'm from Wayne now because my address is now Wayne, and I wish it was Wakefield, or a little bit closer to Wakefield, because I always introduce myself from Wakefield. And so, the significance of it is that it's not only, only hard for me to find a place to live, my family's been here forever and ever, but also I'm looking at some of my peers the same age that they don't have the opportunities of housing to be able to set their roots in here like I want to, and also I have siblings and cousins that want to be able to come back to family farm, and right now there's not a place to live. And so, I just want to share my perspective as someone who wants to be involved in Wakefield and someone who has the roots here in Wakefield, that it was really hard for me to find a place to live, and I'm really excited about this opportunity for apartments, and obviously the need is there, and that's just a little bit about my perspective of the importance of it. And so, hopefully, it doesn't take everyone a year and a half to find a place, and then end up not really finding the perfect place here in Wakefield. So, let's not get, let's not perfection, let's not let perfection get in the way of progress and be able to bring everything gathering, make it work, turn housing into a spring, more people like me back here. So, thank you.
I talked to Swanson today, they're happy that you're there.
Yeah, me too. It worked out, but my address is now Wayne.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Matt Farah, I'm the secondary principal at Wakefield Schools, new to the community, and my wife and I love it. When I accepted the position as principal here, just didn't, didn't give housing or anything a second thought. But after I signed the contract, obviously it became a very important thing that my wife and I looked into, and it was rather stressful, rather stressful to find a place that we could, we could land and live in a certain amount of time, because I needed to get started quite a bit early. Now, full disclosure, then we learned that we have a few pets that don't quite fit the city ordinance to live in, in Wakefield, and so after that, it became a lot more stressful to find, to find a place where I know we did. And, you know, so just from a personal aspect, you know, to be able to have housing that would either be permanent or temporary would be, would be a huge benefit for, I know personally, new people coming to Wakefield. The other standpoint is, is I am part of an organization that we want to recruit and retain valuable teachers. The teachers that we have are awesome, they're great, and, you know, the power of the school is a lot, depending on the quality of the people we get. And when I would hire, hopefully I had the opportunity to hire teachers, to not have to worry about the next thing that, you know, I have to apologize for our community that we have limited, limited opportunities for them to live. And then the other thing that was surprising to me, talking to my staff, was the amount of staff that I have that live outside of Wakefield. Now, as a school leader, as someone who wants my school to be a vital and strong part of the community and connected to the community, I think it's important that my staff be community members. And so, many of my teachers live in Wayne, which I think is unfortunate. And so, this, as a personal standpoint, and as a, as someone who wants to build a strong school for this community that has strong teachers and strong connections to the community, which I think goes hand in hand, I would really appreciate you considering this proposal very strongly. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of zoning change? Carrie?
First of all, the, the change actually sounds like the exact right thing to do. Wish we, I didn't think of that, I'm glad. But because I really believe that, that whole area is commercial, and it barely resembles any industrial level. So, commercial, if that allows what we want to do, I think that makes perfect sense, so just for my two cents. The other thing is, just want to mention to you guys, you know, the PNC has spent hours and hours since last March or April, every meeting, we beat this to death, we beat the bushes, we try to think, where can we, where's the place, where is it, where's that perfect place? We've got some thoughts, but they're all long-term thoughts, and I think you guys are doing pretty good diligence right now, which I understand, and that's great. But the other concern I have is even if we found that spot today, if it's not within kind of the existing city limits, I think, I'm guessing you're talking a year to two years to put in infrastructure, not to mention a lot of money to do that. So, so my thought is, is the future's today, it's not a year, it's not two years from now. Our future could be part of it, might go down the drain. And I think we, that's why I would urge you to really give it, to give it strong consideration to go ahead and use this. Again, like I've told you this before, I was part of the group that bought that 40-acre tract initially from, from Masonic Lodge. And when we did that, it had nothing to do with industrial, it had everything to do with Wakefield. When we thought about housing, maybe it was going to be single-family housing developments. So, the idea that it's, this, this doesn't fit there, I don't necessarily see that. It's a mixed-use property, and I think you've got a great street, you've got a great place to put this project, and it could grow from there. So, anyway, that's just my, that's for whatever it's worth. That would be my urging for the council to consider.
Thanks, Carrie. Is there anyone else?
I'm sure you all know my point of view, I've said it many times now, so anyways, like I said, obviously I'm speaking in favor of rezoning this property. There's, there's obviously lots of reasons, but just the fact that, you know, our housing study here in Wakefield, they show that we need 50, 50 rental units, basically apartment-type units here in Wakefield, not to mention the single-family homes. Nobody's discounting what's been done in Wakefield, there's been a lot of work done around single-family homes, up on the hills, very nice, there's been a lot of work done. And I know that we're looking for the future and what to do next. I guess my biggest fear is, is that if we don't go ahead and move forward with this, we're gonna let this opportunity go by. We've already let one developer leave, we've got another one on the ropes right now, how many other projects are we gonna let come to town and leave? Developers are gonna stop coming at some point, and these developers are the ones taking the risk, it's not Way Two. The developers taking the financial risk here, we just have to give them the means to be able to do it. So, like I said, this benefits not just Michael Foods, as Mr. Hyman and Mr. Farah just spoke to, there's a need for the school, the ESU, there's a need for everybody. But like I said, my point of view is we should, we should move to, to go ahead and get this rezoned. I think if we get one project going, it's just gonna snowball, and we'll have more and more available at that point. But for a community like this in northeast Nebraska, to have an opportunity to actually grow, should be an exciting thing that we need to be ready to move on. And right now, we have nothing ready to go other than this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speak?
My name's Joseph Itek, I'm the starter given side here, I'm either for or against.
So, you're a neutral person?
I'm neutral.
Could, could we, what we're supposed to is let everyone with us four speak first, and then against, and then neutral, so could we hold you until we get to neutral?
I didn't know there was a neutral.
I learned that through, doing the same thing.
Sorry, they, they get tired of hearing me, so if you want to... I guess, as, as a taxpayer, my question is, what is our timeline? If we do put this back to planning and zoning, are we looking at another six months before a decision is going to be made, and then that decision could still possibly be no? Because I don't think that's fair to Mr. Jacobson, to keep him waiting to do, make a, a business decision for almost a year at that point.
A year?
Yeah. I mean, it's already been six months.
September was the first time we were here.
So, it's four. So, if it takes, we gotta go back to planning and zoning, then we gotta come here, then you guys will table at another type, and then if you do decide to move forward, then we have to have three readings of the ordinance, which is another three months.
I don't think, I don't think it would be that long, I think we can act pretty quickly once we make a decision.
Okay.
We've talked about that.
We talked about this a little bit before the meeting, and we can't hold a special meeting, we got the, to discuss it anymore. We can wait for three readings, we can expedite it, we can have another month if we want to.
Okay. The other thing is, is that I submitted a letter from Delone Wilson with Cubbies, and I'd like to go ahead and read that aloud right now for you. Delone wrote, he is the president and CEO of Cubbies, who is looking also at doing some business expansion here in town, so the lack of housing can have a real impact on, on their ability to do that. Delone writes, "We have the opportunity and privilege to serve a number of rural communities in Nebraska, Iowa, and South Dakota. There are many benefits to serving rural communities, along with a number of challenges. One of those challenges is in many rural communities is the lack of affordable, quality housing. If given the opportunity, we prefer to promote from within our own company. In most cases, that requires a new managerial candidate to relocate in order to take the next step in their career. On more than one occasion, new managerial candidates have been forced to turn down opportunities simply because they cannot find adequate housing in the community they sought to relocate. As we evaluate opportunities to expand our business, the availability of quality, affordable housing is one of the criteria we look at when deciding to expand to a new town or make additional investments in the towns we already serve. Thank you, Delone Wilson."
Thank you. Anyone else in favor?
I'm a little reluctant to speak. I'm Mike Moody, I'm the interim superintendent. This carpet bag has only been in town for three days. I anticipate that those who are going to speak after me might have some concerns with the location and the highway and the school, and yet, it is not ideal. But for schools to be vibrant, we have to have kids, and I just, my knowledge of Wakefield, because this carpet bag has been here before, is we'll come together and we'll come up with an adequate solution for that location to meet the needs of our kids and our community. And I, I know there's a lot of things in, in this entire project that I'm not privy to yet, but it sure looks like a good one to me, and I would encourage the city council to do what he believes best. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in, speaking in favor of rezoning? Mike?
Yeah, I'm Mike Solomon, I, I signed in already. I'm in favor of this, I, I think it's saying, I think the time is actually past, I think it's time to move. The location, while perhaps not ideal, it's ready, infrastructure's there, all the utilities, the roads, there'll be no additional expense for the city. It would be, it's something that could be, construction could start right away, and we really need to move forward, we need to move fast. We've, we've been cautious, we've approached this cautiously, and that's why, we've had hearings, we've had developer who was turned down, and now we have another developer. And I agree with what was said earlier, that if we don't allow this type of development, pretty soon they're gonna stop looking at Wakefield, and we'll be, we'll be left out in the cold. I think we need to strike now, we need to move, it's time. We have the place, we have the willing buyer, let's go with it, let's get it done.
Thanks, Mike. Is there anyone else who likes to be, speak in favor of? If not, then people that would like to speak in opposition. And anyone in a neutral position, now it's a fair...
The only three that I'm asking is, what's it gonna do to the real estate taxes, or is rezoning, is it gonna change that?
That's a good question, I'm not sure how that would be.
I don't think there's any intent at this time to rezone his property, it would still stay like it does.
Okay.
So, that should change that.
That's more than I can do.
That answers it, thank you. Anyone else in a neutral position? I know I'm in a neutral position, can I go up there and speak, or do I just speak in here?
It doesn't matter, it just, you're gonna speak.
As a, just a citizen, I guess, nothing else. The concern that we have is, you know, it was mentioned at planning and zoning, that, you know, we build, if Tom builds the townhouses, the apartment, then if it goes well, he's, he's willing to build another one, possibly. And he's built several in Wayne, and other, has apartments in other areas. The concern that we have is that I don't think planning and zoning, at least one of the speakers didn't have a problem with it, is what are we gonna do? Are we gonna go, are the council gonna be charged with purchasing another 40 acres of ground, and running the infrastructure and building the streets? We had a little bit of a talk with CBA, and they're not thrilled with the idea, they're not gonna be in opposition to it, but they think there are possible dangers with the chemicals that they have, and young kids who like adventure might get over there. Those are the concerns that I have. The other concern is, you know, when we passed tax increment financing, it was not, it had been talked about before, and there were several people that spoke tonight in favor that were, I'm not, I'm not gonna say several, there were some that spoke in favor that were opposed to tax, tax increment financing. And when I asked Megan if, if this, if this project would go on without tax increment financing, she said she didn't know. And she didn't, and then I asked Tom, and Tom said, no, it would not. So, tax increment financing is a part of the deal. And it's just like the grocery store for Delone, you know, they've already worked out, Tom Houston's already worked out that would be, you know, quite a bit more than $200,000 that would be tax increment financing, which would help with that project. And I know as a council member, I know there was a person that had been in business in Wakefield for genera, for the third generation, he came and needed some help, and we didn't have a dime we could give him. You know, so if you want to talk about six generations, there's three generations in a grocery store. And there was a piece of ground across, just directly across the highway, that is residential, that was for sale, and it wasn't purchased. That property did not have tax increment finance, it's not in the blighted zone. So, that plays a big part in it. And I hope you realize that there are a lot more things involved than just us moving forward with apartments and those kinds of things, or housing. And we're taking due diligence, because one, one of our council members said, man, if we could find an alternative site, that would be better. And we gave ourselves up until, you know, February, to try to figure out something else. And we've had some, had some success in, in finding some people that are willing to sell some property, but... And when that, when we talked about that, the councilman that brought it up, that we should send two councilmen, or the mayor and a councilman, and meet with these people privately, and not disclose our findings, we're gonna do that in February to our council in executive session, because real estate can be talked about in executive session. But I think we've done, I think we've gone above and beyond, we've had a lot of meetings. I did call, if you recall, Brady, at the, the planning and zoning meeting, you asked the planning and zoning pass it, so that the elected officials could make the final decision. And I talked to one of the people on planning and zoning, and they said they were not in favor of changing the zoning, but they were in favor of moving it on to the elected officials. So, I just want that information out there. Realize that we had people that were in business for three generations, that we didn't have a nickel that we could help them with. And we've got people coming new to Wakefield that we can give them, you know, in the case of a grocery store, we can give them two, almost $300,000. In the case of an apartment house, we can give them $60,000 to $70,000. And that plays a big part in it. And some of the people that want growth now, when they were in the council, they did not want tax increment financing. they did not want tax increment financing. So there are a lot more issues here than you, than if you haven't been involved in it, that you don't really realize. And that 40 acres has cost us a pretty penny. Don't think that was free. And is it gonna discourage, the question we have is that gonna discourage other people that might wanna put a business there? And if we get one apartment, you know, if we, if we rezone this, we've set a precedent. We're not gonna be able to turn the next person down. I mean, that to me is unfair. If we allow one to be built, the next guy wants to build one there, we pretty much are stuck. And what's it gonna be then? Is it gonna be apartment, apartment, apartment? Uh, I guess that's a good thing in, in some ways, but there are some other disadvantages to that. Because people built there with the idea that that was not going to be for apartments. The businesses that are there now have no idea that there were gonna be apartments. So that's my time. That's all I wanna say. Anybody else that is neutral? Yes?
I would just add, I, I'm the council member that you're referring to.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, there's, there's been a lot of talk of development, properties, and things like that in town. Most of it's speculative. So I felt like this was a good opportunity for us, you know. I, I don't feel like it's the ideal location. It's not the perfect location. I think most of us know that, but we know that we have a need for housing. Um, so I felt like this would be an opportunity to actually reach out. We identified, um, property owners who have property that we felt like would be good for development here or in Wakefield. Um, so that's what we've been doing over the past couple of months. The mayor mostly has been sitting down with his people.
Larry Soderbergh's been great. And Larry just had some medical issues, so we've kinda been sidetracked. But some, some other council member might wanna step up. We decided it was gonna be two people going, not just one, and then keep it confidential. But we're, we feel like we're having some success. And as Ross requested, at least, we would know where everybody stands at the present time.
Right, we, we've got hard answers. I think we've made some, uh, progress as far as that goes. Um, now, to Terry's point, I think, you know, this is probably a year, two years or more down the road. If you're looking for a quicker solution, then you're probably looking at the Ford out there. And I don't think we, as a council, I can only speak for myself, but have any intention of holding this project up or anything like that. We're just doing our due diligence here and talking to property owners and, and looking at the future. Because I don't think an Aplex is gonna solve the problem. It's gonna help, but we probably need more.
To go along with that, too, we talked about at the, we're having this, or retreat, where we can, we can do the process a lot quicker, too. But I don't know the information about the land around.
He doesn't, he, we, we have stuck with what Ross requested. We haven't shared the information with hardly anyone. And the only, probably the only person I shared any of it with at all was Megan, because, uh, there was a reason for that. And, but we've tried to keep it confidential. And it's really difficult when you go to, excuse me, when you go to somebody and you've set up an appointment with them, and then before you meet with them, somebody else comes and starts pestering about, do they have land for sale for the city? And we're trying to do away with that where other committees aren't going. Just, we're gonna do it. But I think it's, it's counterproductive if other people go out and, and, uh, 'cause we're, we're, oh, we're not gonna harass them. We wanna know what their answer is. Do you have property that you're willing to sell at the present time? And if they say no, we say, "Thanks for your time," and, and visit with them, and that's it. But we will know at that retreat, and the council will be told exactly what the situation is. And I think that's, uh, is gonna be a good thing for us. Go ahead, Scott.
So we go with that. It's not, we're not looking to take another six months to make this decision. We're gonna make it, once we have, I mean, I wanna know the information personally so I can make a better decision, but I think once we have more information, we can make a better decision at the city council, um, together. But we're not gonna prolong it another three months. I mean, I, we talked about it. We would, um, move along wave hearings if we need to, to get it going. If that's what we think about.
Anyone else in a neutral position?
I am. I'm gonna give you my thoughts. You know, I'm in favor of this project, 100%. But where I'm stumbling at is the best possible place for it. You know, we need this. We will get it. Please give us a little more time to make sure that we're making our best choice that we have available to us at this time. You know, we would have to put another street in, I'm sure, Mike, on 9th Street for this project. That would be an east street coming off of Cottonwood. So there would be another street that we would have to put in for this project. The other concern I have with property owners is, why can't this project be moved north, down the street a little further, get away from CBA out there? So that's something else I would like to know. Can it be done? But I know we need to move, and we are moving. But I think we just need to make sure that, that we're making the best choice. Because it's gonna be something that we're gonna live with for years. This is gonna be where we're going. And we know we need to go. So please, be considerate and give us time to make the best possible choice. Because we're in favor.
Terry?
Just, just one other thought, or, well, it's a hilarious question. You know, I was thinking about that, too, about 9th Street. Do we need to pave the whole block? Can we just pave the, just a, like a, you know, enough to get the town driving that first corner lot? So I don't know if that would save us, rather than pave a whole block that we don't even know if we'll ever use for a while. Just a thought or a question I had. And then the other thing, you know, the other thing, I, I, I agree. I mean, you guys spend a lot of money out there. So I'm kind of a return on investment kind of person, and I'm thinking, anything we can do to sell those lots and start bringing some economic activity in, commercial of any kind, it's gotta help us. And, and in this case, that's why that place, while albeit not perfect, it, at least it doesn't, other than maybe the street issue we're talking about, it's really, you've got it ready to go, and it was all good. It was well done, well, well thought out for, like, somebody pointed out, all the, the infrastructure is there. So, um, kudos to you guys, because it took some, it took some nerve to spend, what you guys had to do to get that developing to get started, so.
Thanks for your comments, everyone. Uh, I think if, if there's no other, if there are no other people that would like to make comments, I think we close the public hearing? Oh.
Wait, I'm Tom Jagerston. Um, you know, I, we've done the drawings, went through building the buildings, and, uh, our proposal is to build eight blocks first year. And if that works, we build the 12 blocks the second year. You have a good challenge, in my opinion. You have a lot of jobs in town. You have a lot of demand. There's a lot of small communities don't necessarily have. It's harder to go and find an employer, you know, and then, once people have jobs, they can easily afford housing. I mean, they can make, they pay rent, or they can buy a house. Here, what you have is, you know, I went to the meeting out at the community building where Michael's Foods represented, said they moved 70 jobs to Minnesota because there wasn't enough housing here, not enough employees. You know, as you wait, um, you know, those opportunities may be go somewhere else. Will those come back here after they put them in a different location and built the infrastructure? You know, that's more of a Michael's Foods question. And not just Michael's Foods, but other employers in town, whether it's teachers at, you know, I have lots in Wayne. If you prefer, I can build a building in Wayne, have people drive. That seems foolish. If you're trying to make Wakefield grow, you think you want the people here and then the school here. We've decided to build another building in Wayne, and that one we're gonna do first now. This, this one hasn't gotten off the center. We haven't moved it off. If you get an idea, two years from now, we'll look at the facts again. But what changes as people move somewhere else? You know, once the kids are in school and they're living somewhere else, what's the likelihood they're gonna move back to Wakefield? You know, it'd be less. You know, I, like I say, I think you have a good problem in that you have a lot of jobs. You have a lot of people wanna live here. You just haven't, uh, over time, don't have maybe the best place to build an apartment. Small town zones aren't, uh, it's not like Omaha where you have a comprehensive plan of everything, you know, this whole development's laid out. When you have an opportunity to do something, I think lots have been out there for seven or eight years, roughly, you know, that no one has done anything on there.
Well, there's a lot of businesses there that have come in. I mean, buying plants is a big business. When it came in, we were promised that there were gonna be four or five new homes go up because there were gonna be, uh, managers, and that never happened. I mean, you, you, you can't predict the future, Tom. And the question I would have of you is, why didn't you buy the property across the highway when that was for sale?
You know, we came to Wakefield here just a little bit ago to look, and people said there's demand. You have housing stories, studies that support that demand. You know, we've interviewed some of the employers, and some have come here tonight. There's definitely more people who would move to Wakefield and work here, you know, like they had a place to live. I, um, you know, it's definitely your choice.
But I mean, that ground on the other side of the highway was for sale just recently, and you didn't jump on that.
I'm not. Um, you know, I looked at all the options that were available, and in my opinion, this is the best place to put it, the way it is today. If you buy property and put a street in, put utilities in, um, you're gonna invest more money and time. We'll see what it looks like at that time. And, uh, I'm not, uh, I don't have a real big beef in the game here. You know, we spent $1,000 doing pictures and time. Uh, we're not, uh, you know, but, you know, comfortably, you know, we're not gonna sit and do nothing, uh, while you're trying to wait.
We wouldn't expect you to do anything, but the last time I talked to you, you sounded like we would have until early spring.
Three to three months to do the planning, once we decide we're gonna go.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, you know, in theory, you know, depending on how soon you want something built, you know, until you decide you wanna do this, I can't really start the clock. And, uh, that's why we started last September with the idea we could get this stuff done during the winter time. So then we just start building in the spring. And we really haven't moved too far, you know, in the process. And I wanna be fair. There are difficult choices, and change is always a little bit hard for people. You know, and I, I don't wanna do, uh, like I say, you have a good problem in that you have a lot of employees and people wanna live here. For small towns, when you can read the stuff, how many small towns in Nebraska are declining in population? You have a good problem, and you have the potential to grow. And whether that, but anyway, I'm not gonna, if you have questions about the project, uh, bring them up, and I can answer anything. But, you know, until you decide you wanna do it, um, you let me know.
Well, you heard what the comments were. We'd like to have you do it. We just wanna find the right spot for you to be able to build it. And it's gonna take, I mean, you know, we got in a hurry on, on one of the businesses out there. And before we knew it, we signed a lease that was really restrictive. And then, instead of waiting for 30 days and thinking about it, we signed it. And it was very restrictive. And then when we had the idea of the previous apartment house, I signed the checks for about $1,000 in lawyer bills to go down and see him and get it changed so that we could try to build that apartment. So there's a reason not to get in a hurry. And we're trying to be, do our due diligence.
We appreciate, um, you know, being interested in the community of Wakefield. I think the council is well aware of the housing issue. And this is a step in the right direction. So appreciate you being here and closing.
Okay, we need to open the public hearing on the liquor license.
Did you wanna close this here?
Yeah. I thought I had closed it.
Need a motion.
Oh, a motion to close it? Second it.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second. Ross? Larry?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Val?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. We need to open the public hearing for the Class 1 liquor license application. You wanna explain that, Lee? Can you do that for us?
Well, that's the, um, county, county line over here at the, the bowling alley that, um, have applied for a liquor license so that they can, uh, provide alcohol for events out at the civic center. It's an on-sale-only, um, license application. They made the application that are required to have a public hearing and make a recommendation to the liquor commission as the purpose of the hearing, so.
Okay, anyone would like to speak in, as, uh, in favor of that? Anyone opposed? Anyone in a neutral position? So we can leave that hearing open for a little while? You recommend? All right, the third item. Action on the minutes of the December 11th meeting. They were in our, you guys all have those? You've looked at them, I'm sure? Any corrections?
I have one question. The street superintendent, is it listed for 2019? Is it supposed to be 2020? Okay.
Isn't it in a weirdish?
Oh, it's in an Awears. Okay, then maybe it's right.
I think it's right.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
You do it after the fact.
Okay.
Yep.
Cover mine.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, that's the way to operate.
Anything else, Larry? You got something?
Second.
Scott made a motion, and Val seconded it. Larry?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
And Ross? All right. The treasurer's report. Have you had a chance to look at that? I'm sure you have. And you have any questions about? Scott, you have a question? No. He moved to approve?
Second.
And Larry seconded? All right. Uh, Scott?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
If you want, you can close.
We're gonna close the public hearing on the rezoning of city-owned real estate.
You did that, the number six.
We're gonna close the public hearing on Class 1 liquor license for county line. So we need a motion to close both of them? Or is that one?
No, you did not.
All right. Scott, you made a motion. Val, you seconded it?
Sure.
All right. Val?
Aye.
Scott, or Ross, Larry and Scott? All right. Action on the ordinance 2, 2020, a million zoning map from Light Industrial to R2, and we decided to table that action.
Do you wanna do something with the?
Do you wanna send it back?
Send it back to zoning and planning and change it to?
That's what, that's what our legal team recommended that we do.
I'd make, have to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to send it back to planning and zoning and have it changed to the, from R2 to C2.
We got a motion by Scott to change it from R2 to, we're gonna change it.
Send it back to planning.
Play, send it back to planning and zoning. All right, Scott, second that?
Aye.
This is hard when you're in a straight line. Val?
Second.
All right. Uh, Ross?
Aye.
Larry? Scott and Val?
Aye.
What is the planning and zoning?
They've said a day, and I don't think.
Last Monday of the month. So I think we have just enough.
Monday?
Wednesday. The last Wednesday of the month.
So what's the last Wednesday?
28th, 9th?
We're doing that on the 26th.
Good chance of a special meeting by P and Z.
Doesn't need to be a special, does it?
We'd like to make it, move on at our, at our.
Retreat, which is the 26th. Tree's in his calendar here.
Number eight, recommendation to Liquor Control Commission for a Class 1 liquor license application.
That's if you want, you know.
County line?
Recommendation. County line.
Okay.
So moved.
To approve?
Yes.
Second.
So Val, Val made a motion, Scott seconded it. Larry?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Val and Ross? Okay. Action on the ordinance. This is 1/2020. Is this Brian Miller's?
This is Foot, Lee Foot.
Oh, Lee Foot?
Yeah.
That's right. So all we have to do is pass, we have a motion.
We need somebody to introduce the ordinance and move for, and then.
So it's not, we can't just, even though he's made a down payment, right? So it's not, we can't just, even though he's made a down payment, right?
Yes, we, yes, he has, we've signed a purchase agreement.
But we haven't done the ordinance.
That we haven't introduced it.
So we gotta introduce and move to pass an ordinance that Lee Foot, we're confirming that Lee Foot has purchased the city-owned real estate.
I'll introduce ordinance one dash twenty twenty to confirm the sale of lot seven, S7 State, second edition, and move it through pass for final passage.
Need a second?
Second.
And then we need to vote.
Oh, wait.
Oh, what else we gotta do? Oh, we gotta read it?
Introduced it now, somebody needs, yes, you need to read it and then move for the wave.
This is ordinance one dash twenty twenty, an ordinance confirming the sale of certain city-owned real estate to Foot Construction Limited Liability Corporation, and establish an effective date, beater name of the mayor and the council of the city of Wakefield, that, and then, that's what we're talking about, right? Okay. So we had a motion and a second?
Well, you had it introduced, and now you have a motion to waive the three readings, is that what?
Yes.
That's what we want. If you wanna do that.
We do. We felt like this was one that, it's pretty simple and straightforward, so we could waive the three readings. We have a motion to waive the three readings? And a second?
Second.
Okay. You get all that? Behind, Ross?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Val?
Aye.
We need a motion for final passage.
And a motion for final passage?
Make a motion for final passage.
Scott made a motion and a second?
Second.
And Val? Larry?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
And Val?
Aye.
And Ross? Thank you. Sign it? See what's next. Action on letter of intent for football track facility project.
This, we talked about at the meeting, last meeting, you guys decided that you needed more time or more information. This is the actual letter, and maybe Megan, she talked about it in the last meeting.
Is your, is everybody else gonna copy it?
Just a minute. I think you all had it at the last meeting.
You couldn't have this letter, don't think?
No, I put it on the letter at this time.
Oh, yeah. No, we didn't, I haven't seen the letter before.
And this is the grant application regarding the project, the football field project, right? And that's my understanding.
Yeah.
We're doing the grant.
Let me give a little bit of background on this whole issue. I think it's important, the background. Last January, we had a council retreat, and one of the activities that our council took part in as long as, along with our staff, was to go through a process by which we, each elected official was able to state what they thought a priority item was. And we did, we gave them one opportunity all the way around the table, and then we went back and gave them a second opportunity. But here were some of the items. Streets. We've got a really good paving project coming up on Mitchener Street. It's, it's in the works, it'll be happening this spring, it's a good project. We also are doing South Main. So, two big paving projects. Daycare. Broken ground, right? Right? So that's, start in the right, you know, the right direction. And Mr. Fariff, I understand what you're talking about as far as teachers. My wife and I were offered jobs at O'Neill, and the only problem we had, we had, at that time, you interviewed before the whole board. And they wanted us to come out there. We kinda want, I mean, we really wanted to go out there. There was no housing, so I understand what you're saying. But, so, and daycare is a big part of it, too. We had a great lady taking care of our kids, our daughter, one daughter at that time, and that was, those were determining factors, for sure. Infrastructure, and we're talking about electrical and a lot of other things. New water filter plant. We've got a problem with, our filter plant is old. Mike could tell you all about it, but we won't take time right now. But, we're in a study. It's gonna be an expensive project. Jim, you're talking about possibly one point five to two million dollars? And that's coming up. And will be one of the things we're gonna have to do. Housing. We've worked hard on housing. Help extend utilities to the football field track complex in the hope that we could get something moving towards completion. Broadband connectivity, I think I brought that up, I don't know anything about it, but I thought it's something that we need. And there's grants for libraries to improve their, their computer work. Public safety was mentioned, I think Larry brought that one up, I don't remember now who brought him up. Police and fire protection, other things mentioned, but not as important at that time. We're, sales tax retention, which has become more important. School parking, with safe school parking was mentioned. Equipment upgrades, we bought a new truck, so we've done some things there. Now, the biggest priority that was unforeseen in January, and that is, our share for dike repair, which was unforeseen, has become our top priority. The city shares eight hundred thousand dollars. And that's a lot. And I was talking to Brady, and, you know, I think down the road, our dike may be, we might be required to raise it two or three feet. And Brady said that that, he was out there, and that water was right. He said it was closed. Talked to Sean, and Sean has, said he has a picture that shows it's within six inches of the top of the dike. And he said it's probably closer to four inches. So we've got some big issues. Housing, is it our only issue, fellas? Now, looking back at it, I'm gonna make this statement. School parking and their football field is none of our business. That's not a city responsibility. Extending water, electric, sewer, is our business. And at that meeting in January, that's what we talked about, that we could help with. That's where we were at. There's nobody that would rather have the football field done than myself, but realize, I'm a big sports nut. And I also have to realize, I'm the mayor of the community, and I'm supposed to make the right decisions for everybody. So, with that said, there's one more thing I'd like to say. I went to a meeting on grant writing. Lynn Ziegenbaum, who was the director emeritus of the Peter Kewitt Foundation, spoke. And we just got a grant from them about two years earlier than that. And it was interesting, because she knew all about what we were doing. In our, in our grant, which was a smaller grant, for them, it was a fifty thousand dollar grant. But she said, "Do not shoehorn a grant application into a grant fund where it doesn't belong. Don't look for loopholes, be honest." And she said that's very important. So, I wanna make that statement. Also with that, our retreat, I asked the council, these are the things I asked them to do. I said, "We can disagree, strive to treat each other with respect. We're not always gonna agree, but we can still be friends, and we can do it in a civil manner." And this council's done a great job of that. No one, I hope no one feels like they've been belittled if they have an opinion different than somebody else. Something else we asked for. Slow down. No surprises. Take time to plan it, in order to get a great plan. And, I know we've made mistakes in the past, and I can give you examples, but I'm not going to. Where we got in a big hurry. And I understand people that are doing the project, they want it done. I would want it done, too. But every time we've hurried, we've screwed up, and we've cost the taxpayers dollars. So realize that my directive is, slow down and get it right. And I think that's important, and this issue is coming up. I've been honored to serve in the council for several years. Had seven elections, went through seven, seven different elections with the primaries and the general. I served with some really good people. But, I wanna tell you this. From my perspective, this is the hardest-working group of four council members that I've seen, and it is an extreme privilege to be your mayor. I appreciate what you're doing. I know you're doing a lot of work, and I appreciate it. And you know that you're doing a lot of work. Now, we can talk about this issue, and I already talked to Megan earlier today a little bit about it. The last I talked to Megan, this project was going to be done next year. We went to the school, we talked to Building and Grounds, I taught most of the time. But Building and Grounds was there, and listened to a lot of things that went on. But my thoughts were that we would help with extending utilities. And, I'm concerned that this, that if we do this, first of all, if we're not gonna, if we're gonna, if we're gonna circumvent the system, I don't wanna do it. If the system is there that we have to own fifty percent of the property, then we need to own fifty percent of the property. And a hundred years from now, if the school closes, that property would then be, the school, the city would have to figure out some way to buy the whole property. But, we're not gonna circumvent the system and say, "Yeah, we'll own it fifty percent for five years, then it will go right back to the school." I don't wanna be involved in that. And, the concern that the council has, as I've talked to one other member, is, how does this, how does this project, as far as our future, if we need these funds? Because these funds are set up for municipalities, not for school districts. How does this impact us getting funds later on? Could we have gotten funds for the daycare?
No.
Through this project? Okay, that's what I wanna learn, and I don't know that. But I think I should know that. I think I need to get the rules and regulations, and I should know it. And I think our council would like to know it also. Because we've got a lot of buildings coming, that are coming up. Now, that's all I'm gonna say about it. And I'll let the council discuss it. And we could either take action or table it and wait.
Does anyone here have any more information on this? Or what the intention is for the project, or more details on the grant? The grant funds, funds to be awarded, and might not have to be used?
The, the grant is for civic and public areas. So, it is a civic and communities facility grant. So, it's the same grant that we use to help with the, with the civic center. It has to be used for recreational areas, public gathering spaces, that are, again, open, open to the public. Unfortunately, it can't be used for daycares, it can't be used for a fire hall, it can't be used for infrastructure, none of that. So, the grant is required to have matching funds, which is not being asked at this time from the city. There is no matching funds to be asked from the city. No cash is being asked from the city. It is the school, and I'll let them speak on this. It will be their responsibility to fundraise or finance the remainder of, of the project. The grant, the letter of intent is due January fifteenth. The full grant application is due February fifteenth. This is the first year that the state has allowed us to do a partnership between the municipality and another political subdivision, which includes schools, counties, you know, it can, any other political subdivision. But it does require a fifty-fifty ownership. I did, Mark Victor was copied on this email from the, the city, or the, excuse me, the school attorney today, that said it's a very common place to put in, and enter local agreement. And he said he could have a draft to me by Monday, if not Friday. Now, again, that's gonna cost the school money, so that's up to them, whether they want to move forward with that. But that's the, that's the ins and outs of, of the grant. It's five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
So what's the matching portion of that?
It has to be one-to-one, which, the budget for this project will exceed that. So, the, if the funds don't get raised, or if we don't even get this, we're gonna have to look at private fundraising, or the school's gonna have to, have to, you know, finance the project, so.
So the school, one way or another, will have to come up with five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to match this?
At a minimum. Yeah, the school, private fundraising, other grants. Yeah.
Megan, can you count in time contribution?
You can, to a, a certain proportion. But you do have to have at least one-to-one cash. So, and again, this project is going to exceed that one-to-one match. You know, it exceeds a million dollars. So, you know, the, finding the, the matching funds, or meeting that requirement is, we're gonna well exceed that.
So the city doesn't have to come up with five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars?
No.
So, anything that they put in, back to Paul, you were talking about some of the infrastructure needs, that would all count, and you wouldn't actually have to dig into your pocketbook to, to offer.
Yeah, it would be in kind.
And I think I understand all that. The only thing I, that, I just think we would, we would get a lot better project if we took our time, and if we raised the money and applied for the grant the following year, if, if the council would be so inclined to do that.
When did you say the grant would be awarded?
They, now, this is, this is the state government, so it is supposed to be done by, and acknowledged, awarded by March thirtieth, is what they've said.
Twenty-twenty?
Yes.
And when do those grant funds have to be used?
Two years.
Two years?
Pender's also applying for these funds, for, for their project. So, you know, we know we are already gonna have some, some competition there as well, so.
I got a few questions. I would like to see this project done, always have, ones that got started years ago. My question is, when we started this project, what was their goal? I mean, we've sat empty for years up there, and nothing's been done. I mean, where were they at from day one? Where did they wanna be at by now? Does anybody have that answer?
I do.
Okay.
I started that project with my cohort over here, and John Carlton is the architect. And the number one thing, Larry, as a school, you know, the number one thing is, we need to get kids off the street. It was a safety issue. I did not wanna be spending hours and thousands of dollars in court on a lawsuit if one of our kids got run over on the street, because we didn't have an adequate track facility. And the other thing was looking at a comprehensive school system, which we are, and track was a significant part of our activities offering, and we had no track. So, it, it, you know, it's like having one of your biggest classes and have a classroom for it. So, it was, for us, it was just a natural extension of, of the business of schooling. And the idea, the initial concept, and I don't know where or why it died, but the initial concept was to have a multi-use facility out there. We, we talked about soccer, lining it up, so we actually looked at studies on where the sun was at certain times of the year, rising and setting, so that it wouldn't interfere with our ability to use it. It was for soccer, football, track, and obviously, then you had to have all of the accessories that went with it, lights, stands, you know, concession and all that. That's, that's what it was, which is a comprehensive sports facility, which is, in reality, is also an educational facility. We would have PE and recess and other activities out there.
So your goal was, once you started, to have it done in a few years, Mike, was it?
It's always my goal, to get things done.
Why didn't it keep going the ball? Why did it die, you know?
I wasn't here.
Jeff, you're here on the scoreboard, you know why that happened? Mark, are you here?
Mr. Hyman has more insight than anybody.
Does that really pertain to us, moving forward?
I just wondered the history, why, why we're going now and why we're dying from.
I think when Mr. Hyman was here, we were telling the kids in junior high that they would be playing football up there. And then when Mr. Hyman took the job in Waverly, then the next superintendent, I don't think, had that as a priority, is how, is how I saw it.
If I remember correctly, Paul, that was, that was the plan, as Mike said, it was planned to be completed in stages. And so, when we put that in, we wanted to make sure the structure and stuff, there was content underneath the track, and the plan was football was gonna be, and such, and that. We tried to, you know, infrastructure, place for future use of that, but all of it is also financial, because it's a significant element of the project. And I think the board was interested in the bond issue for football field. And I think there was a lot of conversation about, and continued to share it, the resources that we had with the city, and two taxing enemies to put a lot of dollars towards, that field wasn't worth the desire of the board at the time. I can't speak for what happened after, after that, but that was at the time. We committed to, he had tracked these, completed them, having stages, the next piece, and then you had to set an actual timeline for that to happen.
Listen, I just had an old, a prelude with Larry, too. I mean, you see, it's an expensive process, and I was gone. But I still did miss two thousand and eight, like most people in this room. I mean, it, it was tough, tough sledding for a lot of people financially, two thousand and eight through about two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, I think that's what happened to schools across the state. Funding got cut substantially, and I, and I can't speak for that, what's happened since that time. I'm sure, so with that, I hope that there's always other parties that come up.
Yeah, like you guys, I didn't know. That love should have lasted forever, right? What the heck were you thinking?
That's right.
The only, the only thing, the only part of this, from the city, is being on part of the grant process, right? We're not being asked to contribute. I mean, you just need it because we need to be, you need it, you need the city to be involved, it could have to be fifty-fifty.
But...
I mean, that's all I.
My question for the council would be, do we foresee ourselves needing these funds for different projects in the next two or three years?
Could be. I think we need to learn more about what the grant covers. But I'm not, I'm, I don't know that that would disqualify a project if we, you know, use the civic center and use this project. I had a question for Jim was, what, that infrastructure that we're talking about is pretty expensive. Do you, you've worked on a lot of it?
We had, we had some old estimates, uh, six figures. I remember, I think six figures, um, maybe when, when, when Bill was superintendent. So I'm sure that's gone up and I'm sure that's changed a little bit, so.
How much? What are we talking about?
Three, three or four hundred probably.
For what?
Three or four hundred thousands in infrastructure.
Underground, electric and.
And right now, that is built into our budget because we did not know what the, if the city was going to be willing to do anything. So it is built into the budget, correct, Matt?
Correct, yeah. I guess one thing for me that I look over is, we may need the funds, yes, but that'll also bring funds to the city too. I mean, that'll bring a lot of people to the city, but being able to own track meets, um, just everything. I, I, I think it's a great asset for the city to be able to get that.
My, my question is, um, for five years, if we're fifty fifty ownership, and there is an incident, someone does get hurt, who's liable? Are we both? How does that get handled? Do you know, Matt?
Depends on which part of the field it happens on.
You know, seriously, that, that was the first concern I had. We own fifty fifty, anymore with kids and football, holding buckets. You know, and it could be, it could be me falling off the bleachers, cracking my neck, you know?
But from my, from my experience in being involved in a situation like that, you know, when previous school I was at, we had to rent facilities and, and so, you know, we had insurance waiting for liability. And when an incident happened, you know, they, they, they sued whoever they could sue. So absolutely, in this, you know, if the city's fifty fifty on, you know, your, your insurance company's gonna say, okay, you gotta cover some liability on that, so that will be added to yours. You know, same, you know, if we build the facilities, the school, we will have to add to our protection. Um, and that, and that's why you have the liability insurance. So I, I absolutely, um, you know, the, the, the lawyers involved are gonna find out, you know? And even if you didn't, since it was in the city, they may still sue you.
Well, I can imagine it'd be much different to play football down to baseball.
Yeah, 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 because, yeah, I was gonna say, we're, we're in the same situation now, uh, playing at, at the, uh, at the select, that kinda point, you know, you, you're, you're, you were putting your, the city at risk in the same, same, uh, situation. But one of the things that I, uh, noticed when, when I came to school and started to evolve, just finding some things, you know, there, there's very, very often in, in the world of education, you know, the school can, you know, sort of the educational experts can get a bit insulated. Like, we're the experts, you don't bother us, we do our job. And, and that, and that's not a, a, and I think that's, um, somewhat prevalent in, in our school. And I really, when Megan, uh, explained this opportunity for the city and the school to combine, you know, to combine someone and work together to help this project, and, and I really would desire that this facility be a community, um, facility, not just, you know, I, I think it's a, a, a positive thing that we own it together. Like, as we tell the community, it's for community use. Um, you know, there's some things in the plans that would, would make it, I think, very useful. I mean, I, I could even, we get a call from a dad who wants to go play catch with their son at night, and I can get on my phone and turn the lights on. And the technology they have, none of the light bills is gonna be negligible. You know, and, and have balloons and barbecue out there, and, and it's gonna be a great, uh, facility for our community. And I, what we are asking is, you know, we, we cannot, um, procure this, uh, this grant without the city's partnership. And, and, uh, we built in the budget that all the costs would fall on the school. Uh, and we're not asking that, and I, I don't want, uh, the, the city to stick their neck out and, and pause taxpayers, anything that beyond that they, uh, can't, you know, can't do, you know, or, or, or shouldn't do, or, or tax, that they don't feel led to do, um, as well. So I, I think, um, you know, that, I think there's great opportunities for us to work together to, uh, to do this, this project.
I, I have a question for Teresa and Leland, and I, I do love free legal advice. As a school, city, don't we have a, a layer of protection in terms of tort liability over just the average citizen, or did that go away?
Well, you gotta follow the tort claims act.
Yeah.
And there's some protection there, but it doesn't really insulate or isolate. But, but I mean, they, they have to go through that procedure. It's a little bit different than just me suing you.
And we do carry pretty extensive liability coverage. And I'm telling you, joint usage is, is becoming, uh, in fashion. Omaha's building a brand new high school, uh, out in northwest Omaha, and it's a joint use facility and a joint build project with Y M T A.
Isn't our new gym a joint facility?
It was, but I think because of, uh, concerns about school safety that it no longer is. The weight room can't be utilized any longer by somebody coming in during the school day, is that right? And Dan Gardner gave five hundred thousand dollars, and I had to be, happened to be at the board meeting. The, uh, issue failed on the ballot. First time it came through, the first issue was to build a gym similar to what Randolph has, which is a little bit bigger than Randolph's, which would have been a beautiful facility. But it failed by a few votes, and then Dan Gardner came to this city council meeting, and I think Gerald Gure in the council, and maybe, uh, and he said he would donate five hundred thousand dollars to the project, which he did. And then I believe the school board, still concerned that it might not pass, they cut the project down to what, the gym that we now use as a second gym. But I remember Dan said, I don't want some kid with a basketball under his arm being told that he can't come in by the custodian. That was his only request for his five hundred dollar. And it wasn't too many years later that I was there, witnessed a custodian tell the kid he couldn't, with a basketball under his arm, that he couldn't come in. But sometimes what you think is gonna happen for unforeseen circumstances, it doesn't necessarily happen. It was a joint use facility for very long. It just didn't work out very well.
And it got, it got down to liability?
Yeah, at, at liability insurance and, and concern for safety and, yeah. The biggest concern I have is, don't you honestly think you'd have a better project if you kept working on it and did this for the next grant cycle?
How, I, how would it, I guess, I can't answer that question, Paul. Tell me what you're seeing.
Well, we, we've gotten in a hurry on projects, and every time we get in a hurry, we get a very good result. And, um, I can give examples, I'm not going to, but we, we participated in a building that, it's a beautiful building, but it's not the building we could have had if we would have taken our time. And we also were prom, we've been promised as a council that if we do this, they're gonna do that. And then we don't have any legal documents, and pretty soon, we do what we're asked to do, and then they don't do what they said they were gonna do. And the last three years has happened to us three times. And I, our council is, is on record now as saying, if you're gonna, if you're gonna impact a vote by saying you're gonna do something, we want an illegal document before we take the vote. Because we've been burned on that in the last three years. And, and we've been put into a real tough predicament as far as taking care, for example, of all of the maintenance costs of a large building. And, uh, so, you know, you learn from your mistakes. But if somebody wants to promise something that's gonna impact a vote, you're gonna sign a legal document, period, with us.
So what are we rushing, and, and I have to call this. I, again, I'm, I'm coming in here after things have been done that I'm, I'm not aware of, but what are we rushing?
Well, the plan for one thing, uh, and raising the money would be the biggest thing. I would have the money in hand before it came to ask us to take part in the grant. I would have at least a lot of the money in hand. For, if it's a three million dollar project, this is only gonna cover, if the school matches five hundred thousand, that you're still only a third of the way there. And we were told originally, like, three weeks ago, that was a one and a half million dollar project. And we also got concerns about why the price tag is so high. And I would think that the school board would have concerns with field turf and the replacement cost of field turf. And maybe you're not, Mark, but I would think that you would be.
Field turf's a conversation, all of this is conversational now.
Right, but I mean, don't we wanna nail down a plan before we go and ask us to, to stick our, you know, to, to do this? I mean, the, the money will be there next year.
The money's here now. I think all we're asking for is a signature that says, yeah, you have support the project. And we apply for the grant, we get the grant, we move. We don't, we don't get the grant, uh, we move. And in a year, we, we reply for the grant, say we've moved this far since, and we're gonna move this far, uh, after we get the money.
And to be, that's, that again is something that I think that the, the money being raised should come before us agreeing to this, but that's just my personal thing. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have some. I, I move down is the funding secured for this project, which I've learned now. And I'm, I've been on the council, and my intent was, a year ago, was to possibly do the infrastructure for this facility someday. The water, electric and sewer, which I think we're all in favor of doing that for council. And the other concern I have is, I haven't seen any paperwork on this, you know, documentation, what the city would be liable for. I've seen the drawings, where are we gonna park the people? Where are the people gonna be at? Where's the parking gonna be up there? Where's the parking gonna be? Because I've seen some drawings were up there. And at that time, the drawings were plans, and there was gonna be a street going over to Seventh Street, coming off there, West Olympics. And I don't think any of that is ever gonna happen with the circumstances up there. So my concern is that we make sure that we have a plan, that we all know where we're gonna be, and, and work for it. And the other thing is, I've just been looking at this or hearing about this for about two or three months. Is that enough for me to get educated and say I'm comfortable with this plan? No, I'm not. But I hate to be rushed when I see the timetable for these grants that are coming up. So, but parking is a big issue down at that school. Every school has parking issues. But if we do another project up there, I just wanna know where we're gonna park the people. Can anybody answer that tonight, Brian? Where are we gonna put them? Because we have a congested area already.
When did that circle drive go in? And those, those parking we have now? Those on my watch, you should have seen that mess before we did that. We will have to address that issue, and it's never gonna be very good for all of the people. The ones who get there early are gonna get the best parking. We went to Madison last night, and this old man huffed and puffed all the way uphill, and he huffed and puffed all the way uphill back. I mean, Larry, which.
Every town has it.
Yeah, and, and we can't build a parking lot for every car. I mean, we, we, it's a, it's a problem we'll have to deal with. Now, back to the rush, I, somebody could see the rush. The only rush I see is making a commitment to the grant. Once you make a commitment to the grant, we're saying, okay, we're committed to the project. We're not gonna be out there with shovels digging holes tomorrow. We're gonna, first thing I'll do, I can't go back to John Carlson, we lost that deer man. But I'm gonna find an architect and the engineers, and we're gonna put together a concept plan. And I'm sure that concept plan is gonna include an address, because that's what these guys get paid for, some, some of the parking issues. And as we work forward with that, there's gonna be some things that just are not going to be feasible. Like, you, and I, I'm not familiar with what you were talking about on, on the end of the street and some of that. But, I mean, we'll, we'll have to look at available options for additional parking. And if they're not there, we'll have to go to an alternative. But all I wanna do is let's put, let's put the, uh, the intent down, and let's start moving forward. Because if we're not gonna move forward, I got other fires to put out up there.
Well, I'd put the intent down and say, you guys move forward, and next year apply for the grant, and we'll help you out.
I'm not gonna be here, actually.
You don't know that.
Well, yeah.
You know, I kinda, I, I don't, I don't, first, I don't think it's moving fast. Uh, you know, this talk has been going on for a long time. I, I know we've sat in meetings and it's, we've talked and talked and talked about it. You gotta move forward with it sometime, and I think it's been an opportunity for the city to be able to work with the school. Like, we talked about last year at our, um, retreat last year, we, we said we had to work with the school, and we talked about, we need to, we do need to get something done. It's not asking anything from the city except for being part of the grant. I, that's, I think this is one way that we can work with, with the school, and it's not a huge commitment on the city. There's still a lot of the work, and it's something that's gonna benefit everybody, including us and the city, and taxpayers and everybody, I mean, once it's all completed.
Well, the other thing is, it's gonna be a fifty fifty property, right? City's gonna own fifty in the school, right?
Apparently according to this grant, yeah.
Right, so really, the city's gonna be responsible, or we're gonna have to quit the door for this project for years to go. Because I'm not gonna do any loopholes that we're gonna mitigate in five years. Either we're in it or we're not. So it's, we are gonna have ownership down at the facility for you guys.
We already do. It's, it's, it's our school, it's not my school. It's our school. And I, I was just fortunate enough to have a, a big part of that thirteen years ago, and, and by the grace of God, I'm back for a short while.
And there, if part of the project, the plans is additional parking. Uh, the entrance, uh, to the stadium would be to the, was gonna be to the northwest, and along, I believe that's Eighth Street towards, towards the track, would be angle parking all along there. And then there's, uh, room for additional, additional parking, uh, facing west, on the back of our, you know, we call our student parking lot, uh, so. Uh, there, it, it won't be, you know, for everybody adequate, um, but from my experience, and we rented Nebraska Wesleyan, which had zero parking. There was, they would not let us use the one parking spot, uh, for a Class C one school. And they, you had to park in the streets, and you had to park far away, I guess, I was fortunate. So I got, I wrote the last, but, uh, but there is some, especially handicap parking up by the entrance. Um, so there's some, uh, some plans to do that.
I just had another old dog moment there. I guarantee you that it will be as good or better and cheaper than parking at the University of Nebraska football.
Probably owners up there, tell off lots of technicalities.
But we, you know, we've, one of the things we've championed is try and have a good relationship with the school. And we've been doing that since I've been on the council. That was one of the priorities was that, and I know Jim would attest to that, that we want our administrator and the school administration to, to work together for the betterment of the community, and, and we've tried to do that. I, I, I'm not opposed to the project. I, right now, I'm not on board with doing it now. And part of that is probably the fact that I just don't like getting something this large on the agenda on the last, at the last minute. We talked about it in January, for God's sakes. We, we need to be given the courtesy to be involved in the process when we get the information before, the day before the gall darn meeting. And it really irritates me that, uh, you know, I could pass it on to the, to the council. But for me to find out at five o'clock yesterday that we're gonna talk about this tonight, that's not fair. And, uh.
I thought we did talk about it.
We talked about it before, but I talked to Megan, and the thing was dropped, and it was gonna be worked on next year.
That was my opinion. That was my opinion, that I said I didn't know if the timing was gonna be right.
You said it went up to three point five million dollars, we're gonna, we've, we've rushed this thing, we're gonna slow down, and it might be next year, that's what I was told.
I'm not gonna argue with you on that.
No, I don't wanna argue with you on that, but that's what I was told. And if, if I'm not gonna be told the accurate information, then don't tell me anything.
And I did ask for this to be put on the agenda prior to yesterday.
It was on, it was, exactly, was it put on the agenda?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Because the agenda we got on Monday was not there.
But if you wanna get something through an organization, you might wanna talk to the, the person in charge at least.
Well, then you need to tell. Well, then you need to tell us what the procedures are going to be.
Said, come and talk to us, Megan, would be the procedure.
Okay, on what, every single subject?
Any subject that you have. If you want to put an agenda, put it on early, and it would be nice if the mayor would hear about it before the, day before the meeting.
And I gave you a call today, and you told me you didn't have time to-
I talked, I said, I did not have time today. You want to call me, and you think I'm gonna be at Trebekin Call? It's not gonna happen. But if you call me and set up an appointment, I will be there. If you want to have a motion, have a-
When it was on, you know, neither really here nor there right now. But I guess the bottom line is, it's, it's not the city's project. It's the school's project, like we talked about before. Is the school prepared to move forward with this? I mean, do you guys feel comfortable moving forward with this project right now? You know, basically, you've got two years. And I guess the other thing to bring up is, if you, say you fall flat on your face with fundraising, and you get, you know, you come up with the one point one million dollars from the grant matching. You could use that to probably do some pretty good work up there, I would imagine. You may not finish the whole thing, but that is another possibility. How do you guys feel about that? I mean, I guess, my question, is that the intent of the board and administration to move forward with this regardless of whether we apply for the grant or not?
Well, I'm, I'm sure all of you are aware. The board has been in a situation that's pretty tumultuous. And I emailed them all, well, we met yes Monday, and we said, said, we want to approach the council. We want to talk to them and see what your intent is, because you have to send the letter. Emailed them, and I said, we're not gonna go with our checkbook out. We're gonna go let the council know that administration is on board, we're building a grounds committee, is on board, we'd like to move forward to this. I think part of the problem we had in the past was we weren't communicating, council, or, school board members were getting blindsided with information that they didn't know. So, nobody wrote back and said, don't you dare, or don't use my name. I, and everything I picked up, city, the school board would like to move forward with this project. Now, can we do it? Mm-hmm. How many, how, how big is this grant?
I mean, it'd be a good jumpstart for the project.
Would have been nice to have it at the ballfield. We've been working on that for fifty years and going year by year. And it would apply to a baseball field, a foot, current football field as well.
One of, one of my concerns as a council member, um, you know, if, if we sign the paper, we go forward, we find out in a month, yes, you can apply for the grant. Then we find out that, yes, we received the grant. That would give us time to find out how much it's going to cost to do the infrastructure. And, you know, there's possibility that we can't afford to do any of that this year. Well, the dike has to be done. Whatever they find down there, that has to be done for this whole community. You know, for, for the biggest employer, as well as all the rest of us, for our water, for our sewer, for everything. The dike has to be tended to. And we don't know for sure what that's going to cost. We have projected costs. But the funds that we have access to right now, for me, have to go there first.
Well, I don't think we're asking for any more.
Well-
That would be very helpful, uh, obviously. And if Jim is in a position where I come to him and say, or the next superintendent comes to him and says, can you run some electrical lines for us? And he says, no, I'm not in a position right now, because we're working on, on a dike or whatever. Then we have to, uh, look at an, an alternative means. But, but we're not asking.
I, I, yeah, I see what you're saying. And, yeah, and, and my vision is, where's that gonna, see, a lot of times, I think we've jumped into things. Do we know where the, where the sewer's gonna go? Do we, what are we gonna-
That's why we gotta hire, we gotta hire people to draw that out.
That, yeah, and that, that, it makes me nervous not knowing any of that while committing to, yes, let's partner up and do this party. You know, I, it makes me nervous. But if that's something the school board really chooses to do, and it doesn't look like it will cost, you know, no expense.
If you got in a position to spend three million dollars and you weren't nervous, I'd have to, you know. Yeah, I'm nervous about this too. I want to get it, but I think this is an opportunity, and it's a unique opportunity, and I, I think we owe it to the community, kids. Larry, get on with it. We've sat there for what, eight years now? Larry said, let's get on with it.
Well, I said, get on with it, but take our time doing it.
Well, we're gonna work together, and-
Yeah, I've, I've got to, is we-
Get on to it.
There's, there's a chance that we don't get this grant this cycle, even if you did apply, you could reapply next year. If you wait and just apply next year, what happens if you don't get it?
Yes.
You know, um, get two shots instead of one, that's more thought process. I've, I'm, I've always been in favor of the project. You know, it was a wish list item at the council retreat last year. You know, especially with, there's still just that thought of, you know, co-ops and stuff like that in the community. I think facilities are really important. It's not, it's not just the school. I've said since I was on council that the school is the face of the community. You gotta have a strong school, and part of that is having good facilities. So I would love to see it happen. If you guys are gonna take the lead and go with it, um, you know, I guess I don't see huge risk here. Uh, we're not on the hook for really anything financially. Yes, there has to be an agreement between the school and the city and the property, but, um, I don't see a big downside unless we really were thinking we were going to use that for something else in the near future.
Why doesn't the school, it's not a bond issue. I'm sure it passes this community.
I think so.
I think so. I think everybody does see it, though. I don't think we're going with the bond, that's great, but-
And a bond issue could very well be part of that, of, of that process. And, and that would be a board decision. I, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to that. But I, I think there are other mechanisms we could use as well. I have a plan B.
Okay.
Okay, and, and if the bond doesn't pass, I have a plan B. I'm not gonna be out there ringing the bell like those guys at Christmas and trying to get dollars. I, I got a plan B.
I was in church Sunday, had two people, um, stopping, wanting to know why we're building the football field for the school instead of our, shouldn't come out of Wakefield tax dollars. And I tried to explain to them that we were taking our time and trying to make sure there weren't any promises that we're not going to be kept. But, you know, the community doesn't have much information about this. It's all, it's something that, you know, just came up all at once, and, uh, my feeling is, I'm a hundred percent behind it if we do it a year from now. But I just, my feeling is not, not to do it until the school has made some of their money, has got some funds on hand. We can go on record saying that we would, we would apply for this grant a year from now, but that's just my opinion. The board has to make the decision.
You never go to a bond issue without a concept drawing. You, you put it out there, you show people, you, you go to the community club meetings, you go to churches, you show, you, you explain why you need it, uh, why, what the costs are, what we're looking at, and you ask people to vote in favor of it, and they either vote yay or they vote nay.
We just built a building that we had a, um, a drawing, and we signed change the last twelve months. We've signed change order, change order, change order, or change order, instead of had an Audi construction out of Wayne. Who takes pride in good buildings in this area? We got a guy that was a little bit less, and we got, we didn't get nearly the product we would have gotten without his. And that's because we hurried through it, we listened to somebody else's idea, we just worked to go along for the ride, and that's what we got stuck with. And, uh, it's not a good feeling. And then we had a promise of us helping take care of the building, and, um, somewhere that fell through, so. That's why I, I would just take my time, but the council can make the decision. Any other input? We can vote, I think.
I got a question.
Okay.
How much information has the public been aware of this project? How much information has been granted? Shared with the, you know?
Until it was, if it could go forward, there wasn't really a whole lot to say about it.
So the public really don't have much information out there?
As far as the newspaper goes.
School hasn't done any ER?
You know, that wasn't out of the tent. It was to make sure we had our ducks in our own before we started getting people, you know, to, you know, we wanted to make sure that things were, uh, you know, even the board on Monday will be discussing whether to go forward with it or not. You know, we just discussed in, in committee, we, uh, made sure that the other board members knew that we were going to be here, and, you know, if you, the question came, were we committed to going forward, and we answered yes, that all board, uh, members are on board. So, um, you know, we're, we're, uh, trying to be, doing our due diligence and not, not getting carted before the horse. Getting people all, um, in a ladder before we were ready to go. So as soon as the board gives the approval that we are ready to go, then those kind of, those kind of things and, and informing the community will be after that. So, um, the, the, the date that the grant, the letter intended is due, uh, or, you know, we, we need to-
I would, I would almost feel better, you know, taking a vote on something like this after that, to be honest with you. Cause I feel like if you follow the schools, they really have this much.
The letter intended is due on Wednesday, so.
See, that's, that's probably my advocate, is the rush. I've sat on this council with the, being rushed all the time, and I've heard of it. And I think the public needs to be involved in knowing where we'd like to go with this project and get some feedback.
So, we're gonna ask the public for permission to ask somebody for half a million dollars?
No, just get their, just get their opinion, see how they feel. There's a lot of people out there that probably don't even know that we're considering in doing this moving on. So is there? I, I was not aware of it, and the paper has not put us the way out. The school has not-
Ross, aren't you and Scott in the Optimist Club? Zach, you guys have had, um, big discussions about how many people in that group are in the community, John?
Hundred thirty are in the group, roughly.
So there's some knowledge of that, answer your question, have we seen in the community? And these are people whose children will have a chance to utilize that facility more or less, too.
Yeah, um, last thing I'm gonna say is the fact that we've got, this body was set aside from municipalities, not for school districts. This year, they've got, where we can do it in our local agreement. If Pender builds a football field with it, if Wakefield builds a football field with it. The legislature meets every once in a while. They're starting today. They got sixty days. They're gonna figure it out. They're gonna say, hey, this wasn't intended, you know, for our schools. This was supposed to help our communities out. And our tax, you know, our tax, um, district is not very large. We've got the boundaries of the community. Yours is a lot larger than ours is. And I don't want to put that in jeopardy. If I asked, if I asked this council right now, I think, from listening to what they're saying, they're in favor of going forward with this project. And, and it sounds like all of them, a year from now, as far as putting the grant together. And we're gonna, am I right or am I wrong?
I'm, I'm doing it earlier than a year from now.
I, I'm not even, I'm not asking that. We probably will vote on that here in a minute. I'm asking, if the vote fails, how many are in favor of doing it? Just to, am I right in saying that most of you would be in favor of doing it?
Next year?
Yeah.
With more time.
I, I'd like to add one thing before I can give a call. And I think it's important, and the other thing you're talking about this is not for schools, this is for community. When I interviewed for this job, it was a young lady named Marcia Crackkey, who was the board president. And I called her Wakefield Public Schools, and she said, young man, it is Wakefield Community School.
That's good to know, that we're gonna work together on that. But I'm telling you, that my only reservation is that it's come up, it's gonna be a hurried proposition in, in my mind. And you, you know, um-
Why are you hurrying, other than asking the state for some money? I don't understand. And you know how come I can buy a-
But I, I don't know that we've, we've got a, we've got a plan. We haven't, we haven't examined that plan. We haven't looked at where the, uh, for example, where the officials are going to dress. Uh, we don't know, you know, we looked at, we looked briefly at a good drawing. But we don't know all the ins and outs of it. And any plan that you have, Mike, can be improved if you scrutinize it, in my mind.
And it also can be beaten to death.
It's their, it's their plan. You know, if we're not putting any money towards this.
It is our money, Ross. It's coming out of the municipal fund.
I mean, in some ways, it's true.
It's all on our own.
But if, I guess in my mind, if they're willing to move forward with the project, and we don't have any use for the grant at this time, that's the same as withholding the funds from them.
Right, but you don't care if they don't, if they don't even approve it before we make our-
Well, and that's what I'm wondering. Can we, can we take a vote with the, with the idea that it's, we're in favor of it if their vote, if their board votes in favor of it? I mean, if they vote in favor of it, then we're forward. Obviously, you guys aren't in the yard.
I, I, I have no problem with that. The only thing I'm saying is, don't say that we're against the project if it doesn't pass tonight. That's what I'm saying. A lot of the, you know, most of the concerns that are being expressed are the fact that we've been burned before by hurrying through things.
I, I, I understand, and I, I agree, it does feel somewhat rushed, I do. But two years, you know, I mean, a two-year window. To me, if the school is committed to the project, in the end, I, I think two years is plenty of time to come up with a plan.
Jim, have you looked at the utilities service part of this project?
As far as?
Sewer, water, lights, where it would come from, how hard it would be?
Originally, you know, back when, when, when they were building that, and had estimates, but, you know. Everything is, is within a reasonable amount of, of, of location. It's there, the sewer is there, the water is there, the electricity is two blocks away. That's your big cost, is everything goes underground. So, it's there. It's just a matter of telling us that we can do it. But number one, we would have to go back and get some new estimates, and, um, of course, council is not to be aware of that and give us direction on that too, so.
And we have talked about that, uh, but we haven't got any, anything concrete as far as the cost. But if there is a motion, I think the motion should be that we're going to go ahead with what's on the agenda item, and we're going to pass it. But that the infrastructure that the city in January expressed an interest in helping with, that that would be coming out of this, the dollars that are raised from this grant. Is that how you're feeling? We're not gonna give infrastructure buddy above the grant, right? The infrastructure is what we really probably is in our domain, extending the infrastructure.
That we will eat that cost, right?
But we're not gonna, we're not going to okay this grant and then also give three or four hundred thousand dollars for infrastructure, is that correct, later on?
That's not even the question.
That's my question.
We're not asking for, for additional dollars.
Okay, you're not asking for it, and you're not-
We're not, we're not committing to doing anything other than applying for the grant.
That's it?
Yeah.
That's it. Okay, that was my question.
But, but the answer to your question, Ross, I think if you have a motion approving the signing of the letter contingent upon the school will approve, whatever their vote is, yeah, so.
So the meeting's Monday, the thirteenth, and it's due Wednesday, the fifteenth. The letters due fifteenth. I'm just trying to do a calendar in my hands, struggling.
I mean, you seem pretty confident. I guess we can go forward with this, I, so we're gonna, if, I mean, if that's what I'm saying.
Have the letter done and ready to be signed and then sign it?
It's, it's ready. I mean, I'm preparing the letter, so it's, if that's your motion, it's gonna be-
Can the letter be submitted electronically, Megan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, yes, we're ready to entertain a motion.
Okay, I would move that we move forward the letter of intent for the grant on the football field contingent on the school board. Voting to approve moving forward.
So we've got a motion made by Ross and a second by Scott. And it's action on the letter of intent to apply for funding. And so, we'll start out with Ross.
Aye.
Larry?
Nay.
Uh, Scott?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
So you'll need to communicate with the city right after your meeting, you know, what action the board takes.
All right, thank you very much. Now everybody can leave. We can finish our hour and a half meeting here, come on up. Uh, thank you for being here. The next action is on the agreement with the Corps of Engineers. And this is where we're, uh, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, or, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars and a contingency of ten thousand or something like that. So it's basically seven hundred- basically seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, I believe, isn't it Jim?
Again, those are those are estimates.
Nobody coming in less.
Yeah, the s the actual bid has not been less so we'll know more once so we get all the stuff to them.
Putting these two together.
Good.
So for the resolution that authorizes this.
Is this with this donation that the land was donated by Michael Foods?
Right. Question on about here's on the deed. Where are we at on the deed?
Um we have the letter from Teresa and I sent it up to our VP and General Counsel to leave her doing it. I'm sure he may have a few changes or something but uh once I get it back then we'll uh.
You always gotta change something.
Yeah, like he always red marks.
So it's it's in their hands.
Yeah, I I would I would be surprised if we don't have some money in the lead.
First of all, thank you very much to Michael's Foods and Brady for uh the land was donated to the city for the relocation. That's huge with us. Appreciate it a lot. Uh we're gonna try to put these two action items on into one. Uh action on agreement with the Corps of Engineers and passage of resolution one twenty twenty for temporary easements and construction documents. And it would be a resolution. So we have to introduce the resolution.
Introduce and move to pass.
Introduce and move to pass. So having the resolution now we're okay. The resolution is a res- it's twenty twenty uh a resolution of the mayor and city council authorizing the mayor to sign all the easement documents and agreements necessary for repair and or restoration of that part of the city of Wakefield Levy which was damaged by the flooding in twenty nineteen. Which agreement shall include but not be limited to the cooperation agreement between the United States of America and Wakefield Logan RBNF Levy System for Rehabilitation of a Non-Federal Flood Control Burk and to establish effective date. And the date is as soon as we get all the documents to them, I believe.
And we've got that cooperation agreement here.
You want me to read this too?
No, this would just authorize you to sign.
These two? Okay. So can we introduce that and move to pass?
I'll introduce uh resolution one twenty twenty and move to pass.
Second.
Okay, Scott, introduce it and move to pass and Val seconded that. So Ross?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
I guess it wasn't the same exact order. Scott?
Aye.
And Val? So that passed. And now do we have to do anything else with the signing? This one?
Yep.
Hey Jim, do you have every?
This day of uh is this the ninth?
What's that?
For the easements, you have everything. You need for me to write that you that was everything.
We're yeah, I think we're still working on the construction easements.
The permanent the permanent ones are the ones that we have left.
The deed, yeah. And he was he was gonna.
We we have the deed. It's up court.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the temp- the construction easements, it's a convoluted legal description that we're trying to work through.
He's trying to clean it up a little bit and then we'll we'll get that all done at one time. Yeah, so.
And this this resolution honors the mayor to sign that when it's complete.
Number thirteen is to approve the drawdown number eight for Community Development Block Grant eighteen PW zero one thirteen. That's Mitchner Street. And it's for six hundred and some dollars, I think is what it is. That is not a lot. Uh but we need to make a motion.
Administrative.
Administrative costume said. That's what it said. Yeah. That's yours. Yeah. Can we get a can we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the payment of six hundred and seventy-seven fourteen.
Mitchner Street. That's what we're gonna go for then. Uh second?
Second.
Val? And now we gotta go all the way to Larry.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Val and Ross. Thank you. Fourteen, appoint remaining boards committees and authorities. Oh golly, I don't know if I should read all these dang things or not, but I'm going to. Uh Board of Health, Mayor, Council President, Deputy Sheriff Donovan Berkland, Northeast Nebraska uh is Julie Roether, Northeast Nebraska Health. And she's in charge of four counties. Cedar, Wayne, Dixon, and I can't even think of the other one. Thurston probably. And then I'm the mayor on the on the board. And Ross is on the board as the both the council president and our local health official. And then Jim, as city administrator, is part of the board. Wakefield Cemetery Board, Tom Eaton, Renee Bermeister, Dennis Carlson, Kathy Muller, Kenny Pettit, Gary Solomon and Sandy Ott, emeritus. Library Board, Ken Thompson, Carol Mortensen, Carla Clay, Lori Nicholson, and Beth Beckenhauer. We haven't had that name on there previously. Uh Depot Committee, Ken Paulson, Jim Clark, Andy Hampel, Alan Johnson, Barstow, Mardell Holm, Jim Stout, Hannah Borg, Barb Farah, Matt Farah, Hileen Pettit, emeritus. Civic Center Board, Val Bard, Larry Soderberg, Bernice Vallejo, Julie Rose, Tom Decker, Mardell Holm, Mike Lou, Sam Udi. Sales Tax L B eight forty, Project Review, Leslie Beebe, Mike Palmer, Jim Litchfield. L B eight forty Sales Tax Citizen Advisory Board, Janelle Eaton, Cheryl Grieve, Leslie Beebe, John Thorzund, and Gary Solomon. Uh Wakefield Planning and Zoning, Jim Lim cool, Terry Baker, Gerald Schrader, Pat Lenz, Karen Victor. Board of Adjustments, Tim Beebe, Tom Henderson, Rex Hanson, Ken Thompson, Terry Baker. City Safety Committee, Mike Mogus, John Pretzer, Adam Ulrich. American Disabilities Act Compliance Committee, Nancy Schultz, Gary Hanson, Scott Hanson. Scott, you're on that committee. I was gonna hope you had been agreed to be on it. And then Adam Goss. Wakefield Tree Board, Bob Berry, Nikki Decker, Alice Johnson, Jan McQuishen, Brian Elzer. Wakefield Housing Rehab, Kim White, Mike Benson, Steve Mundertlow. Business Incubator Board, Brian Miller, Rich Manfred, Dr. James Beerbauer, Lisa Solomon, Julie Thompson. Community Redevelopment Authority, Mark Bejot, Val Bard. And I wanted to wait for this one until the uh retreat because we wanna get that ordinance where we are gonna have those two other people. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a council member. That's what we agreed to. But we we never needed that passed for the council, as Teresa said. So we can't do that tonight. So we'll hold off on Community Redevelopment Board. City Council Standing Committees, Lightwater Sewer, Larry Soderberg, Val Bard, Street and Alley, Larry Soderberg. She was. I didn't know you guys were paired up again, Val Bard. Finance and Ordinance, Ross Hanson, Larry Soderberg. Buildings and Landfill, Ross Hanson, Scott Hanson. Park and Recreation, Scott and Ross. Police Department Review, Val and Scott. And as the mayor, you're the ex officio non-voting member of all of those committees. City Engineer is Olson. Fire Chief is Adam Ulrich. Street Superintendent, Jim Litchfield. Lee Minor is the attorney. Ross Hanson is the municipal physician. Uh we have to have that by our law, Ross. Municipal Police is Dixon County Sheriff's Department. Public Works Director is Mike Mogus. Wakefield Park Board, we're gonna talk about this again at the retreat also because uh this is what I decided to do. We had a very uh good park board but cumbersome. And so we went to three members of the park board and up everybody else as members of the committees working on Graves Park. The three members I came up with, I haven't cleared it with all three of these. I have with uh Ross Hanson, Mike Clay, and Joe Lim cool. The people that are with Ross Hanson but not on the park board are Scott Hanson, Ginger Nixon, Mike Mogus, Steve Grieve. I thought we could have city uh I know Mike's really involved in that part. And we'd like to have his input and him know what's going on there. So is that okay if we put you there?
Absolutely.
With Mike Clay, it's Jeff Keighley, Matt Bren, who's the A D. Bob Blueberstet, Ben Donner, Heidi Brown. And with Joe Lim cool, it's Mary Burgum, Teresa Soderberg, and John Pretzer. Uh I think those are the committees that we've set forward and the positions filled for tonight. If we can get a motion to approve those or if you have questions about them. The park board we want we're not that's not gonna be it's gonna be discussed at the uh the retreat and so will the uh the other committee that we're talking about with the tax increment financing.
Is there is that a new public works director?
I thought Mike was our holy work director. Isn't don't we have to support appoint one?
He has been in the past. I'm sorry. I didn't know that.
I thought he was.
Utility superintendent.
Oh, Jim's Public Works and you're the utility. We're supposed to uh have our we better change that then.
Do you mind?
What would you what about can you have two street superintendents on there? Would it be feasible?
Cause I know you're like you're a street superintendent also.
For the future?
I don't know what to tell you.
Because I mean, in the future, if I'm right now I'm an A. You're an A, correct? In in two years, I can be an A. Or actually, one year I could be an A.
And we want you to be an A.
Yes.
And we work like.
More money. You get more money if you're A.
And we also.
All I have to be is appointed. So I don't know if you can have two appointed to the.
Hey, we might have talked about that at the retreat.
Yeah, ordinance only provides for one. But they could change it.
I just have to appoint one.
You might be able to just say alternative.
Yeah. Is that supposed to be better to them?
What's that?
This would be bikes.
This is so I'm appointed, it's gonna be more money for you in the future instead of stepping back.
You know what, Mike? I Mike Mogus, I'm gonna appoint you as the what is it?
You two we could do that.
The other one, the alternate. Alternate. The alternate street superintendent. How was that?
That's great. We can get onto the state and ask if that's a possibility of if they can do a duel or something.
So you guys get out here before you want to make a motion to pass these? Val?
I moved and we have passed the presented boards and committees.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Would you like to have me read them again?
No.
Val?
Yes.
Uh Ross?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Scott? Thank you, guys. Sorry, we tried to make up some time by hurrying through those, but um we got through fourteen. But this is always our favorite thing to do is action on six six applications to join the Wakefield Volunteer Fire Department. That's exciting. And I suppose is there a member of the fire department here that wants? Come on up.
You're gonna make me go to the podium?
Yeah, we love to have this this information. This is good. We appreciate it.
What do y'all need to know? I think Adam usually.
Just the names. Just the names.
I don't know if I can remember all six either. Um Ken Ron, Ken Ron, a former member.
He'd be good.
More time to do that. Jacob Ron, new to the community. Um John Barch, local resident.
Good.
James Spelt, local resident.
Who did you say?
James Spelt.
Good.
Travis Nelson.
Travis Nelson and is it Enrique Juarez?
Uh huh.
Yep, I mentioned him. All six of those unanimously voted on by the department. So.
Super.
Excited to have them. You guys will approve.
You guys are good people there.
Yep. There's some interest in just fire and some interest in uh EMT out of some of those members.
Wow, that's good. Um need a motion.
Make the motion approved.
Scott Hanson's motion and Ross Hanson's seconded. Uh I can't remember where I'm at with any. Ross?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Scott?
Hi.
Thanks a lot. You appreciate it. Okay, discussion on Civic Center Manager. And this is something that Larry and Val as members of the oh oh. Approve members of City Treasurer, Mayor, and Council President.
Sixteen and twenty are the same thing. So twenty is more to the point.
Passage of resolution two twenty twenty for signature authorization for accounts with Bank First.
Yeah, the bank over here, John's over in this lane, but um they need a resolution so they know who's authorized to sign off on accounts and things. And so we prepared. We've always had one. Um Iowa, Nebraska had their own form or something. But Bank First has asked us for a resolution. So we put that together that provides for you, Zach, and Ross.
Well, that's good. I think always the council president's been there and then Zach's the clerk treasurer and mayor. Okay.
Two signatures required.
How many?
Two.
Two signatures. And usually it's normally it's Zach and myself. But if I'm on, it would be Ross. Okay. A resolution of the mayor and city council authorizing signatories to exercise banking powers on behalf of the city of Wakefield with Bank First, Wakefield, Nebraska, and to establish an effective date. Whereas the city of Wakefield has financial accounts with Bank First, Wakefield, Nebraska. And whereas it is necessary to establish which agents may act on behalf of the city. Whereas the federal employee ID number of the city of Wakefield is forty-seven six hundred six four oh one. And that's all we're gonna say. Now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and the council of the city of Wakefield has approved this item. Motion?
Can we put two of them together?
So we yes, we're it's just one motion to pass this resolution.
Have to introduce and move to pass?
Yes.
So I'll move, so I introduce and move.
Good.
Second.
Larry's second. Good. Larry?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
And Ross? Okay, I suppose I have to say something. Good. Okay, number seventeen, discussion on Civic Center Manager. And Larry and Val are on that committee. Uh I would like to make one more deal here before we're kind of on the topic. We we did have good response to our sales tax uh promotion committee. And we've got a great committee here to promote renewing our sales tax. But Teresa, there's a little a question as to whether we can have a council member on the committee and members of the sales tax uh the CRA on the committee. And did you find out that we can or cannot?
I haven't had a chance to.
But you think in your opinion it would be better if we don't have those people in the committee?
I I would like to find out for sure and then give you a definitive answer. I I do for what I do know for certain is that the city can't you can't use city funds to promote the sales tax.
Right.
So so you don't want a public body that's answerable to the mayor. That's that's one thing.
And Jim can be involved, but we can't be involved in the fact that we're gonna say that we we now have this committee.
But it should be it's the intent is for it to be a grassroots committee.
Right.
Similar to when you have a bond issue. The school can't spend money advertising and promoting it. So it's meant that the community do that. And so any advertising, promotion, meetings, and so on are are at the community expense, not the city's expense.
Right. And I I would like to do this and says uh Bill Hyman is here that I could do this. Can we wait on Larry, Cheryl, and Janelle? And they will be part of the committee if you feel like it's okay. And then otherwise, it's Brian Miller, Jim Clark, Krista Raver, Larry Clay, Diane Johnson, Ginger Nixon, and uh Bill Hyman. And would you mind being chairman of that? Because Larry is a chairman, but if if we're in.
I can't be chairman.
What?
I don't wanna be chairman.
So you're okay with giving that up?
If I can't be on it, I I shouldn't be a chairman anyway.
Okay.
Probably not that you answered it without me, it's just.
Probably. But I just wanted to make sure that you knew. That's not really our committee. We're we're gonna call that.
Right, we're not gonna.
A sales tax promotion committee. But we'll get that information to you guys, okay? And they wanna start working on it either this month or next month and maybe have your and then you asked that they have the meetings maybe at the service unit and not in a city like the Civic Center over here is what Teresa asked me yesterday, right?
Yeah, we were talking about it not it being in a neutral place, not.
Legion Hall.
Legion Hall or two, but.
Yeah, Legion Hall we were. Theater we were. Sidelines. Any of the bars.
Hey, thanks. Any of the bars. Where where have I had here on the manager? Larry? Go ahead.
Uh Val's got a report. You got a report on that?
Okay.
Yeah, um and we just met Monday night, so it's hard to get minutes attached in time. But as a board, we would like to have the council consider approving in the future, not now, um us to look at a manager position for ten hours a week at like fifteen dollars an hour, which would be a cost annually of seven thousand eight hundred bucks. We've had a variety of things come up where if there were a manager on site, it would have made the process much smoother all the way around. So that's something we're looking at. What we would like to do uh in the next month before our next meeting is maybe come up with specific um goals and a job description. And we we want the council to know we really want to do this. We can afford it. It's budgeted. We have the funds set in um that we could use if we were to hire somebody six months, you know, six months into the year. We could we'd have the funds to finish out the year. Um so we wouldn't be asking for any money. So because we anticipate by the time we get the the job description written, advertised, see if anybody is in their right mind to do it, um it would it could move forward. But we think it would be advantageous all the way around for all the different things going on. And we we wanted the council to know ahead of the game.
Appreciate that. And do you want us you don't need to vote tonight?
No, I don't.
No, you want discussion?
We need any action. We wanted to make sure you were in for it.
Is everyone in agreement with that?
That sounds fine. My only question is, so it's within the budget this year? Do you foresee in the future having to commit additional dollars to the Civic Center?
Probably. But we also think that if we had a manager hired, we would have additional rentals and the income. Because we were almost in the black last month. It weren't for very in the line to light up our sign that we'll be, you know.
So this person would be under your control?
Yes.
And you would know financials and every book keeps and everything.
Yes. And then and then we would in turn pass that on to you.
Scott, you all right with that?
Yep.
All right. You're yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The council retreat is gonna be on January, what is it, nineteenth? And we got second reading ordinance nine twenty nineteen.
There. That's already been introduced and you've had one reading. So if you wanna pass it tonight, you need to. There, that's already been introduced and you've had one reading, so if you wanna pass it tonight, you need to waive the second and third reading.
Yeah, this is, this is probably one that we can pass without having a third reading and this is our second reading, so we've been really careful with this. An ordinance confirming the sale of certain city-owned real estate to Brian L. Miller and to establish an effective date. Uh, being ordained by the mayor and the council of the city of Wakefield, so all we have to do is have a motion to.
Waive the last reading.
To waive the third reading and to pass.
And then that'd be the second motion.
Okay, well you need two motions. We need a motion to waive the third reading.
I'll make a motion to waive the third reading.
Second?
Larry made the motion, Val seconded it, Val?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Scott? Almost asked to leave a vote. Uh, so that's good.
Motion for passage.
And now we need a motion for passage, you better not sign it yet.
So move.
Val, move? Okay, Scott? Val, Ross?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Thank you, in order. And, uh, mayor's public comment period. No one is interested in making any more comments tonight, Mike Moog is sure.
We finally received the dump truck Friday. Uh, the last delay was due to the, uh, found a leak in their funnel and section on a cylinder and, uh, so they replaced it before we delivered it. But we have it and it is very nice.
I, I got in there, did you guys?
No, but it's not very.
Did you guys see it? I got the passenger side, then I got in the driver's side and I almost.
Oh, God, thank you for not telling me to just remove the keys.
Keys were in it.
I know. Uh, I did get more bids on Winter Street curb stop project. Uh, the original bid from K Contracting for twelve thousand three twenty was the lowest. Uh, Wayne Lewis, um, was twenty-five hundred and sixty more. Bauer Underground was six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars more and had another person that, or company that wanted to, but, uh, Penrose Construction offered to not bid if they'd be busy.
Good.
So if, if you're good with K Contracting still, I could get ahold of them to, um, uh, get us on their books for the early spring.
I suppose we need a motion.
So that's twelve thousand three hundred and twenty dollars?
That's correct.
K Construction?
Yes.
And they are there.
He actually replaced one one for us, um, on, uh, Pips. So he's already done one, so he knows what it takes, so.
Okay, so that's to put the inserts in, does that cover?
He's, he's digging it, he's, he's putting a rod in and he's repacking, packing it in, we will seed it.
And we'll seed it?
Yes.
So the city won't follow up the bet?
Yep.
Okay? And when, they just anticipated the spring?
Spring, yep.
Spring?
So he can get us on early spring.
And how many rods is there?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Have we got money from, uh?
No, they're just gonna give us a kind of engineering services, so. Well, they may have, uh, they're not here tonight, but they're doing engineering work for us right now.
Just kind of a bill for, on engineering.
How about the other parties that were gonna be reimbursed for their expense, have we heard anything from them?
We already paid for Benson's, they brought in the older seats, we did that back in twenty sixteen.
We got all of them?
Sandy's the only one.
Who?
Sandy's the only one that's brought stuff in so far, we had already paid for that.
How about Salem Church?
I think we paid for that upfront.
Yeah, I think.
Yes.
So we only want to question the Pips.
Oh, we paid for that, we paid for that.
So we're okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm doing good.
Could, could we get a motion to, uh, enter contract with K Contracting of twelve thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollar, of twenty, three hundred and twenty dollars for thirty-two rods? Can they make that?
I make a motion of if they take construction from Wayne, twelve thousand three hundred and twenty dollars for installing the curb stop rods.
Thirty-two of them? Second?
Second.
All right, Scott?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Ross? Larry? Go ahead, Mike.
All right, the light lamp fire alarm system is in disrepair. Um, we'll be, uh, replacing that within the next couple of weeks. It's gonna be something where we can, uh, we'll be notified as well if there's something that happens. Right now it's just, the batteries have been replaced. Well, they need to be replaced more than what they are, that's, they're, they just, they can't find out why. But it has something to do with in their, uh, module. Uh, and we will be burning the tree pile after the next amount of decent snow, so we'll get some of that down.
Do we have to pay anything for this fire alarm replacement? Do we all pay?
Yeah, it's nothing on, it's an older system. What they are going to be doing is replacing everything but really the wiring's there, so they just have to replace up all that. Um, it's less than three thousand.
Anything else, Mike?
Uh, but if you didn't hear, the tree pile.
Yep.
It's gonna be burned, so if you want any wood, go get it.
Found at the dump, right?
Yep.
And those, that payment that we didn't get done, like at Mike's curb, that didn't get done yet, has a Mike?
No, it did.
That's as soon as the weather gets better, we've got that?
Yep. Yep, I have.
You got a few projects there?
I do, yeah.
And we've got one too, so that's good. Anything else, Mike?
No, any questions?
Questions for Mike?
Anything else going in winter?
I'm loving that there's no snow on the ground right now, I'm liking that.
Don't jinx us.
I know, well, definitely, I agree, but, uh, the longer we go without it, we, what we'll have is a, we.
That's good.
Pulling away.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
What kind of maintenance do you do during the winter?
Uh, all the trucks are being, um, they get oil changed, um, we underspray them, um, for salt. Um, a lot of stuff in the, in the shop with that. Um, I've actually gotten some people stopped by with some bolt oil stuff, but I, I don't think we're really in need of that. But, uh, a lot of stuff, uh, along with the light lamp. I don't know, it's all, we're really figuring out how this, uh, little fire alarm system is not good because it, you kinda start paying attention to it. When you watch by it and it's beeping, you just kinda forget about it, so. But, uh, no, we, it's, we just take busy enough inside on a lot of, uh, other stuff.
So you got the new red truck, what are you doing with the white one now?
The white one's right next to it, so.
Still running.
We, we were seeing which one we can put outside, so we plugged it in, well, there's a big old fire underneath that hood when we plugged that one in, so. We gotta use, uh, some fire extinguishers, so we're not plugging that one in. But we, we got a, we got the red one outside with a, a, uh, plug on it, you know, with like a magnetic heater underneath it, so that one's sitting outside.
You know, Mike, one of the things that came up at the, at the, the, uh, meeting that I had with Terry Hanson was. In, in his motorized wheelchair, he can't get to that button to push when they cross the highway down by the clinic.
Really?
And he was asking that you guys maybe remember that he, he's gotta get to that button, so when you move snow.
Oh, okay.
On the highway?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, um, 'cause I actually do that.
I mean, I wouldn't even think about it, but.
Push it past that.
He said he couldn't get to it. All right, thanks. Anything else?
Oh, but we actually move snow for somebody else most of the time.
Guys, you got any questions for Val? Thanks, Mike.
That's true.
Appreciate it. Jim? You're up. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Handful of items there, sales tax, uh, good month in December. Eighteen thousand six eighty-four fifty-five, uh, so brings up our monthly average, uh, a little bit in that about the same dollar amount. Eighteen, eight forty-six is our, is the monthly average, so we picked up, uh, three months there. Uh, and again, we're, uh, looking at, uh, what we can do to get ready, uh, get some projects together, uh, for, uh, renewing our, uh, our sales tax. Uh, by the twen- November twenty twenty five, playing there. Um, let's say, uh, they, Paul made mention of, uh, they were in session today, I was just reading the World Herald, uh, just for your information, if you don't know, it, uh, there's just only about six priorities. Number one is property tax, number two is schools, three is business and sending prisons, uh, redistricting. Uh, we're really looking at something like that. And they're dealing with, uh, student discipline, so our, um, I, I don't know, Paul, if our.
Oh, land bank?
Land bank, we might not get there on time, but, uh, again, we'll, we'll.
Short session, I, I saw Jim in the, in the newspaper, talked about the, the, uh, try to do the, work with the taxes, you know, and, and, and try to get a break for the property taxes. One of the things that's brought up is that they're trying to get some funding for the rural nursing homes.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's something that impacts us too, that, I mean, I know there's a lot of, a lot of, uh, push for tax relief, but. Our nursing home, and I think most of the rural nursing homes are in some serious situation, and I think that might be something we need to support those senators that are trying to get some help there, what do you think?
I think that'd be a great idea, um, I think we, uh, need to look at a lot of things, again, they're gonna have a, a lot to do in a short period of time, so. All the, all the letters and emails, I think are good to send on and, and remind them of, uh, what we're looking for and some of our priorities too, so keep that in mind.
It does list the senators, so if you want, if your committee might wanna send, let, send an email to them and tell them that you're in, on support of that.
They have.
They already have, okay.
One thing I overlooked, uh, on, uh, sales tax, we did have a, uh, sales tax meeting, uh, Tuesday. So, uh, one thing that we're working on, they have voted to approve and we're getting moving on, uh, we've got a couple of different, uh, priorities that, uh, sales tax, of course, housing, rehab housing. Uh, delinquent, uh, delinquent, uh, housing stock and that type of issue. Grocery stores high on that list as well as a motel. Uh, so they did vote and we've been looking at this for some time, they, uh, hired a, uh, a group out of Missouri to come in and make a, an assessment of the needs for a motel. We have a lot of issues, so maybe Val and Brady can, can, uh, uh, support this idea as there's, they bring people to town and we have to lodge them in either Wayne or South Sioux City.
Now, how important is that study?
Well, as far as.
Well, I looked at the sample studies and it looks like all they do is take information that's available from other sources and, and then look at your situation and tell you, I, I mean, I don't. What is it, three thousand dollars is what we're gonna pay for it?
The whole thing, if they did, if they completed the whole thing, it'd be seven thousand, it's thirty-five hundred dollars for the preliminary information. What that does is tell them, tells us, uh, sales tax people, uh, if there is a, uh, need out there, they're gonna look at a lot of what Paul just said. Data, information, travel, um, visibility, needs out there, uh, I'm sure they will be interviewing employers and, and talking to them, but, um.
Why do we need to spend that money for a survey, we already know that we need it.
They won't go anywhere without it, Larry.
Walter Ashoff won't go in their place for nothing?
No, sir.
The, the places, different places they contacted, they said, first step, they said, it's your house, your hotel study to determine if we even wanna go.
Even Walter Ashoff says he needs a study of seven thousand?
I didn't talk to Walter Ashoff.
I didn't get him the seven thousand dollars and tell him we cannot build a motel.
He's had five years to do something, he hasn't done anything, so I don't.
And I think the opinion of the sales tax is they've basically written Walter off. Uh, he wants to be in visible sight of cuddies with a motel, and I don't know how he does that. And, and I, I talked to Walter many times on this same thing, I've even offered, uh, to find some way to get him a lot out there in the forty acres and put it out there. And he agreed that's the best site for it, but it isn't for him. But to answer your question, Larry, nobody in the hotel business will deal with this unless they have survey data.
So if we do a survey, we'd get holiday in?
I don't, I don't think so.
No, okay.
We'll just spend seven thousand dollars for a survey, but please, it's a rip off, what you gotta do, I guess.
Yep.
Maybe.
I don't, I don't think. I think the need is there, the, the issue is, number one, can we find some investors that would be willing to, uh, put this community even to, to make investment in, in a motel of, uh, eight or ten units? And, and build the thing and get it, get it occupied.
That's what Pender does, we try to emulate a lot of the things that Pender does, but one of the things that they do that we don't do, they come up with a lot of money out of people's pockets that is not just from the local foundation.
Correct, so that, that's, uh, one thing that they did approve and, and they're moving forward with and, uh, we'll get a contract out there. And, uh, see what we can do to get moving on that. Hopefully over just a short period of time, we get that going. We've been, uh, dealing with a retirement plan, uh, Ross is, uh, not like Paul did with, when, when ran into that situation with the, uh, care center. Um, they looked at ours, um, we've gotta make some changes, it's a long, hard process. Probably the most frustrating thing is for us employees, we can't contribute, uh, into the retirement fund, it's basically locked up until we get it straightened out and secured and, uh, filed properly, so. And again, on your side of the story?
Nothing on our end, no.
Are we gonna be responsible for, are we gonna be in a situation where we need, need to decide if we're gonna make up for the, what you, they've lost?
Uh, potentially, I don't know how you do that. But I feel like we should somehow make it right. We'll cross that bridge when we get there, I would imagine.
Once we get the, uh, town actually established and everybody's can start contributing, then I think we'll have to work out some issues there, I don't know. It, I've never run across this situation before, um, so it's unique in, in that sense and, uh, we just need to fix it and get moving. Part of the concern, so. Uh, and then, uh, what, last thing we're talking about was, again, housing development and, uh, uh, looking at some, uh, vacant properties and, and seeing what we can do to, to interest, uh, the owners in selling some properties and. And maybe getting some demolition done, houses down, uh, some new properties built, one way, shape or another, so.
Housing development, properties, what, who's looking at doing that, looking at the properties, which group?
Sales tax and CRA.
Okay, so you're on CRA, Val?
But they're kinda looking, I mean, we are gonna do our, we're gonna talk about it at the retreat. One of the questions I had, the seven thousand dollars for the study, doesn't the city council's elected officials have to approve that?
Yes.
They'll get a contract.
So what if, I mean, uh, they're not hiring, they're not hiring anybody until we approve it?
Correct.
That, that's the contract part of it, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I shake my head at that.
Well, I do too.
I, I totally understand that, but on the other hand, if you wanna consider, uh, some type of lodging for some people in here, nobody's gonna come. A developer or builder, uh, of any sorts is gonna come into the community and say, yeah, we agree you need something, but show us that you, you're diligent enough to, to come up with some information too. I think that's incumbent upon us to do that, so.
But we can do studies for every, I mean, for everybody to bring somebody new and we have a heck of a time trying to help someone that's been in business for, uh, eighty years. Or build a street by themselves, pay for the whole damn thing. Go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine, any other.
Thanks, Jim, appreciate it. Okay, reports, please review, please.
Most of our discussion was on nuisance enforcement, we got a couple of properties that we're looking at and Donovan, Bureclan, just kinda monitoring one and, and, uh, working on cleaning up the other. We also had an incident with a, a dog that Bernice investigated today where a dog got away from the, uh, person that was walking the dog, he attacked another dog. So we've got a dangerous dog situation that we're gonna have to deal with. No, no streetlights were reported out, and that's basically our discussion, I think. You mentioned Paul, maybe the Board of Health met, I don't know.
We, we did meet, there were a lot of good things that came out of it. We learned that there's a monks epidemic in Cedar County that, uh, was eighty, eighty cases, Ross, is that what it was?
Around there.
We met for the first time in several years, we're gonna meet every six months, try to do that, think that we've got a little bit of it, we can make some progress. We did learn of, uh, in Wayne, for example, they have a rental class that if you rent property, you take the class. And, uh, it's very good for the people that rent and it's also good for the. And, uh, it's very good for the people that rent and it's also good for the person that owns the rental units and that they learn the responsibilities that you have of a renter and you learn the rights that you have of a renter. And it's worked out really well, so we're going to check into that. And then they have groups in Dakota County and Wayne County where they have an organization for somebody that's in stress, can't pay their electric bill, can't pay their heat bill, where we can step in and help them out. And, and we're, I've already called the lady that runs the program in Dakota County and I'm going to meet with her next week, but there's some really good things that we can do for people that really need some help. We get Sidang caught up in building brand new things, some vendors forget about the fact that there are people living in town. But I think it was a really positive thing and we found out that we do have some responsibilities there. The last time that I met is the president of the council, which probably in eight years that I was with them was when we condemned the Scott's Storm property, and that's been a quite a while ago, otherwise we haven't met. And we do need to meet on a regular basis. I think there's a lot of good things that we can do if we actually get involved with the human part of being on the council. So we did talk about that. Community redevelopment, we got it in the, in the minutes? Art board, anything, Ross? Scott?
I think we've got a meeting coming up, January fourteenth, we did not have meetings.
Library board, they're really excited to have Beth Beckenhauer on the board and they've got, they're going full speed ahead. I think there's a report, wasn't, maybe, Matt yesterday, maybe the report's not in there? See it. Civic Center board?
We already talked to you.
Okay. Fire department, Joe?
Like we said earlier, six new members joining. I think we'll have another one at your next meeting, potentially for you guys to vote on. Uh, we've had several of our hazmat operations members do their annual training recently over in Wayne with their department. Monday nights, we'll be doing the art of reading smoke, just kind of brushing up on that skill. And other than that, I, I see us probably having to get some new gear at some point for some of these new members, but we're going to kind of size them up as they come on board and see what we have in the loft back there to outfit them with, to get them started anyway, so.
You guys doing a good job, we appreciate that. Uh, one of the things, you know, Lyle, with the meeting, he brought up the fact that he thinks he's going to work towards having to pay the EMT on staff.
It's, it's been talked about.
I was going to tell you that I refereed with a fellow that is in that position where he's the paid guy out of volunteer staff.
Okay.
And he said, you hire somebody, you better have really broad shoulders because, he said, there's absolutely people that are not very happy that he's getting paid and they're not. And he said, any dirty detail that happens, they want him to do it. He says it's not a real great position to be in, in his estimation, but.
I, I think the department's stance right now is just to allow Lyle to look into it, not that we're necessarily going to do that, but give him the freedom to research it and come up with some ideas for us.
Sure. That's what Eric Thomas is doing. He said that it's working out, but he says, he said it's really a tough job.
What size of community was that?
Similar? A little smaller than Wakefield. And it's in northeast Nebraska, so.
What is our current numbers now, Jody, now?
For EMTs or for fire?
No, just for all members.
Yeah, I should try to think, but those six were probably pushing thirty, thirty-five?
And just maybe numbers, probably what, we got ten, maybe ten EMTs?
Out there.
So we need EMTs, we need.
Yeah, EMTs is where we, we are.
Hopefully this will help, but thank goodness for Nick Eckberg and Theresa and the guys that answer the calls.
Yeah, a lot of those EMTs.
Yep. Uh, citizens advisory committee. Pack it.
Minutes there, yep.
Met yesterday and they had, there were a couple absent, or was it just, Leslie was absent?
Wes and Cheryl.
Cheryl was absent, yeah. Uh, cemetery board?
Who can hire for new, uh, caretaker out there?
We can't say it this time.
No, nothing.
No.
Okay.
Hatchery board? Rehab board?